Well, let's call this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the free parliament, to the free justice, one nation, for the good of the God, in the defense of the liberty and justice of all.
To anyone that's not aware, this is an emergency meeting postponed from yesterday, March 14th. Today's March 15th. Tonight's agenda also includes items from February 28th meeting, which was canceled. And we have one small amendment because Debbie's not with us tonight. So can I have a motion to amend tonight's agenda to appoint Terry Howard, District Clerk pro tem, and to approve the remainder of the agenda as written? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we are in public comment. This is the first of two public comment periods. This is an opportunity for stakeholders of the Chatham Central School District to speak about items on tonight's agenda. There will be a second public comment, which is open for any issues pertaining that are affecting Chatham Central Schools. If anyone would like to speak, they can come sign in at the table here and have a couple minutes, or they can raise a digital hand online. And I will just give a moment in case someone wants to step forward. And we have nine, nine members? Is that right? Okay. Any digital hands? Okay, so we're going to move on into board comment. Yeah, go ahead.
I, I saw Andy before the meeting. I just have to tell everyone how impressed I am with the cleanup they did, they did to this campus. It is, I was so surprised when I, not that I didn't think they could do it, but it is just a wonderful, wonderful job they did. And I thank you again for that. Wonderful.
Thank you. I, I second that. I certainly, you know, I just came from my house where it's still nice. Walking on a dry sidewalk here.
Even the yellow curves you can see here.
Yeah, it's wonderful. All right, and we don't have our student representative tonight. You know, I, I'm curious, maybe we're going to go right into the superintendent report, but if there's, anyone has anything to share? Go ahead.
Since our student rep isn't here, I thought I'd just give a shout out to production of Mamma Mia. People hear me? I just, I had the opportunity to see it. And I know a lot of people in the room did, but I just wanted to congratulate, it weren't involved. I thought it was great production. The community turnout was really wonderful to see such a packed house, night after night. So congratulations to everyone.
I'd like to second that. I mean, the show was phenomenal.
And I think John Miles is here tonight to sing a number.
All right, with that, we're going to move into the superintendent's report. Dr. D'Angelo.
Okay, I'm going to try to move the camera so we can see Mr. Truddy because he's going to do, oh, actually, we're going to go right, we're going to go to the slides. So we've got quite a bit under this section this evening to catch up on the last couple of meetings. We have quite a bit in terms of the budget. So I'm going to go right ahead and turn it over to Mr. Truddy. And while he's getting situated here, I'm going to bring up his slide deck.
And while we're getting ready, I just want to thank the basketball coaches, JB and John and the assistants and the boys, because they went the farthest they've ever gone to the regionals. They won their sectional first time ever. And we went to the games and a lot of traveling, but they knocked off two number one teams in a row, and we got to the final eight. So that was an amazing run this year. So I want to thank all of them for the last second shots and the enjoyment they provided.
Stress.
Took some years off.
It's good?
Yeah. All right. So tonight, we're going to combine the two meetings. Finance actually met twice over both of these meetings. We go in depth. We have a community member sit on that. And tonight I'm going to sum up what we've discussed. I also have Buildings and Grounds that are going to present tonight, the library and the cafeteria. So we're going to have a few presentations, but I'll go through the budget, the first and second part. So there's going to be one more part after tonight. And then we're going to, you know, pretty soon in about another two weeks, we're going to finalize the budget and present for final approval. So tonight's, I'm going to do the first part and the second part. The first part's the general administrative and support, operations and maintenance. We'll talk about the $100,000 project. I'll have Andy talk about that. And overall, when I roll over the budget, you know, I have first two parts done. There might be some tweaks to that. I have special ed and health insurance of the big numbers left. But I rolled over the third part of the budget. We're looking at about a 2.5, it's actually 2.55% increase right now. One of the things we discussed, and we'll go over the tax cap and the phase ones also, we discussed that we're looking last year, cap was 3.48. We went out at 275. We're trying to balance taxpayer needs with school needs. So this is a very lean budget. A lot of it's just salary increases because once again, we want to go, we actually, our goal is to go under that 275 if possible. The tax cap's a little higher, 3.52, which I'll go through. But we are looking to go under, you know, trying to balance both needs for the next. So here's a, I'm going to go through the next couple of slides. It's the administrative and operation piece. I'll have Andy speak on the operations. See if you can clear that little pieces down there. So Board of Education District Clerk, that's held constant. That's the, when we go, the NISBA, that's also that when we go to the NISBA conference. The reason for a decrease is we had a one-time fee for NISBA policy updating, 3,500. That was for this current year. That was taken out. So that's why you see a decrease there. Chief School Administration is Superintendent and the Secretary. This is just salary increases in that code. This includes NISCIS conferences, contractual and supplies for the superintendent, but we've held all the lines constant except for salary per contract. Finance is in my whole department, whole business office, also includes contractual costs with Omni for our 403B, includes our auditor. Same with the tax collections. Once again, same thing. This is just salary increases. Remember, part of my salary is 11% goes to transportation. So we get 30%, eight on that. Purchasing fiscal agent fee, we had a slight decrease. What that is, is it's our cooperative with BOSI's for, that Barb uses for cafeteria items, milk. The one item that they did take out of this was the bread. The bread bid is no longer through BOSI's because no one was bidding on it. So that's why you see that slight $501 decrease. And fiscal agent fee is immunostat, who we've been using, and we will use again for our bonds that will be coming up on our new project. Legal personnel and public information, legal, we switched to Gerben-Ferlazzo, I think, five years ago, and, or four years ago, and we've done very well with them with that, with that budget line. So we've kept that there, but we haven't had any increases. Personnel is, let's. Personnel, we have a claims auditor through BOSI's. Oh, and then our public information coordinator that we have, that salaries in there. So the slight increase here is 6,645 is, last year, we took money out of the claims audit. We were trying to go once every two weeks. That wasn't enough time to audit all the claims. So now we do once a week with payroll, once a week with payroll, and then the other week is just some billable hours. So we took money out last year, and we're adding just a little bit back. And we think we have the right amount now for that. Operations and maintenance, once again, that's just salary increases. I'm going to have Andy talk about that briefly. One thing I will note, and he's going to talk about some of the work he's done around here. About five years ago, we had a line for about $15,000 called the Five Year Plan, where we were trying to fix things around the campus. And over time, we increased that to 70, 70, a little over 70,000. We are keeping that line because we want to be able to take care of the projects. And he's going to discuss some of the things that we've done in-house. The next slide. Then central printing, that's our state contract, or the paper that we purchased for the district. It's also our postage. Even though postage goes up slightly, we're still within line on that. So that's stayed flat. Central data processing, that's actually a bigger increase. You see the $55,000. And what that is, this is our technology that we purchased, E-rate testing data warehouse, NutriKids, school tool. But what we did add is Zscaler. Last year, I had under the technology budget, under BOSI's code, and they relocated the code up to this code on central data processing for BOSI's. So even though you're going to see the $55,000 increase here, you're going to see a decrease in the technology code in the second part. So all it is a reallocation. So really, that's not really an increase. It's just one, one goes up, the other goes down. It's a reallocation of BOSI's codes. Insurance, BOSI's and admin charges went down, $6,203. Our insurance, we've been very fortunate, even though we had a claim that we've submitted and we were reimbursed. I've been here 11 years, so we still have a solid, solid rating. And actually, I'm happy to say we got the titanium with honors for safety. This is 11th year in a row, which I'll be, will be getting the award next Tuesday in Saratoga. So all that has helped keep our rates, they're projected to be very, very small increases. And we've been getting a dividend the last two years. So that's good. The reason for the drop is the BOSI's admin charges. So BOSI's charges, administrative costs across the board to all districts, but it's based on enrollment. And so as our enrollments dropped a little more than other districts, that's really the, the drop right there. So just totally attributed to enrollment drop. So on the whole administrative and support going up 116,854. Like I said, it's really just salary increases. And there's a reallocation here that I'll talk about. You'll see on the Part Two budget, you'll see a decrease. Now I'd like actually to bring Andy up. Andy Davies, our supervisor of Buildings and Grounds. We have a slide for him.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about operations and maintenance for the year. Let's start with the $100,000 project for the upcoming year. It's going to be renovations to the auditorium, some technologies and some other stuff. I know in the, the bigger project, we have chairs and the flooring, but we're going to try to get ahead and do some painting and some technology upgrades in that area before we do the flooring and the seats over. Just makes more sense to kind of get that done before, before we do the other parts of the project. Field management, completed our first year this past summer. The grass is coming in thicker. We got healthier turf, less bear spots. We're trying to choke out the weeds without, we don't, we don't spray any pesticides or anything like that. It's just grass seed and trying to keep the turf, turf healthy. Heating, heating and electric. Our electric rate is locked for this year. So there's no increase. Our rate, our rate is the same as it was last year. Heating oil has come back down roughly to what it was last year. We hit our peak this year. So we're right on target for the budget for this year. Our maintenance plan last year was to implement a work order system. We have a little bit over 1,400 work orders for the year. I feel like they're getting better, getting done in a more timely fashion with better communication to the teachers. And to addition to the work orders, some highlights of this year, we converted a lot of the parking lot lights over to LEDs. We had to re-bore the feed for the MED lights. The feed went bad. That was going out to them. So all our outside lights are working now. We upgraded the high school PA system, mostly in-house. Service called the one outside contractor, but we got it back up and running, completely new, new system there. The high school sewage pumps, we completely did a rehab on those new pumps, control wirings and sensors. High school electric now is completely replaced from wires going out to the transformer, all the way up to the poles on 203. And we patched asphalt throughout the district, and we sealed and striped the MED in the high school parking lots. Any questions?
Not that this is the fun one, but can we go back to the sewage pumps?
Yep.
Um, there, there was, was there two pumps?
There's, there's two pumps inside. There's also floats. There's some control wiring and some sensors.
Yeah, and I remember it was difficult because we were worried about downtime, right? So was all of that, was maintenance performed on all those components or just some of them?
We actually replaced everything on the inside.
Okay, on both, both pumps?
Both pumps, yep. We left one pump running, and then we would replace the items. And then, and then when that was, those were replaced and that pump was running, then we took the other one offline and then, and then do that. Yep. So we replaced everything on the inside.
I don't have any other questions there. Wondering in terms of athletic fields?
Yep.
Is there a, I don't even know if I'm asking, asking the right question here, but in terms like the use of the athletic fields, you know, the net, not aware to air, changing the weather and runoff and all that. Is there, is there a point in time at which like, there's like a review of like how the, the shape the fields are? Like, I mean, are they good? Could they be, there's something that, do they naturally?
No, we, we have a, an overseeding program. And basically, like in between the different sports, depending on the weather, if you play a football game in the pouring rain, the field's going to get a lot more beat up. But we're doing aggressive overseeding now. That wasn't done in the past. So in between games, we're putting down seed in the high use areas like, you know, soccer gold creases and stuff like that. We put seed down and, and kind of try to get new grass to take off as the old grass kind of gets stomped away. You know, we, we also do like coreration and do, do some fertilization to get the turf healthy. But really, coreration and, and overseeding is, is a big key to this success.
I have one question about that. I know our, our teams sometimes, they, they experience away games with envy on, when there's the full turf, you know, the synthetic turf beard fields. I'm not a huge fan of synthetic turf, especially with the PFAS research that's coming out. But I'm curious, what's, what's the best we could expect short of like rolling up and replacing with, you know, fresh turf from someplace? Is there improvements we could expect from now as that overseeding and aeration continues?
It's roughly a three-year, three to five-year process on overseeding. You're slowly, you slowly overtake the weeds. If you leave a bare spot, then the weeds take off in that bare spot. If you don't loosen the soil compaction, then weeds take off where grass can't take off. So it's a three-year process of getting the turf where it needs to be. And it's, it's really, it's not a once a time year. It's, it's a constant. It's in between, you know, games, weekly monitoring. It's not just cutting the grass anymore. We actually monitor and...
You began that, I don't know, a year, a year ago more?
About a year ago, yep.
Yeah, okay. So we can reassess that in a couple of years.
Is the, the modified baseball field, what they call the pit, is that part of that three-year plan? Is that?
Yep. The, the football team plays, they practice in the back.
Right.
And, and the back, you know, field area, outfield area was in pretty rough shape. There was a lot of crabgrass and things like that that were growing. So we, we have a seed evader. So it actually plants the seeds in the ground. It has little fingers. And then it has rollers that roll the seeds over top. We're using that now, and we're actually seed evading. All are really hot spots. You know, the center down the soccer field, the center down the football field. And then where they practice, we've, we've really seed evaded that, starting to take back, you know, where the crabgrass took off on us.
Yeah, so that's been kind of a contentious spot. A lot of people are frustrated with that field, especially when you try to play baseball on it. Yeah. And we got to get this field up and running for the modified kids.
Yep.
So that's awesome.
Was that the old baseball field?
Yeah, the one that's down below, they call it the pit. And I guess, I think it gets the runoff. So I guess it's a little bit wet there.
So the practice, the practice football.
Yeah, the varsity used to play.
Yep. The practice football field down there gets, gets pretty soupy. But I hit it with aeration at the end of the, the fall. And that helps in the spring, kind of, you know, doesn't give it, if it's compacted, it'll hold water. So we try to uncompact it, put some holes in the ground literally so that it can drain out. It was better last year. Like I said, it will take a couple of years and we'll get that, that field better. Yep.
Actually, I've been, been involved with the sport since I've been here 11 years. So I do want to thank Andy for that, that they're using the aerator. Like, we use the machine now that puts the seeds in the ground, the overseeding. So, and we're out there probably every, once a week in the fall, you know, in the fall before, you know, or in the summer fall before football. So I've noticed a difference. I know it's going to take some time, but I noticed a big difference in the fields. And then the softball especially. And when I came here, it was like asphalt. We got water out there. But he's actually done a program to make it playable, you know, much more playable.
We changed the infield mix. The infield mix had a lot of clay in it. So then we broke it up with, with conditioner. They call it field conditioner, and it's kind of like baked bricks, small little bricks. It gives up water quickly, and then it takes on water quickly. So when we have the rainy days, the girls can play. We're using a similar mix on the boys in, in field as well. And, and breaking up the clay that was in there, we don't have to keep it as moist. The girls didn't like sliding on it. And I don't blame them because it was, it was pretty hard in the summer. When you, when you get those 80, 90 degree days, it would just bake up and get hard. But now we have the proper mix in there. So, so there's, there's proper cushion for when they're playing.
For those, those kids have graduated for a while. So that's the field over there.
Yep, the one at the middle school. Yep.
We got the tax cap, and then I'll go through the second part of the budget. So here's the tax cap. As I stated, last year, it was 3.48%. We went out at 2.75. This year, you look at the bottom line, it's 3.52 roughly percent. And like I said, our goal and discussing in finance is to do as well or better than last year. I'll briefly go through this or quickly go through this. Basically, the steps, there's eight steps in this formula. You start with last year's cat, tax levy, 23.84 million. Then you multiply the tax base, tax base growth factor that the state provides. So it's the bricks and mortar building in our district. That's 1.014% to get 24.218. Base year pilot is added to that. That's the senior citizens apartment complex above the street of the old Price Chopper. And then you take base year capital, that expense net of aid. So that's our principal and interest on our debt, our $100,000 project, our buses, minus all the stated on that. That's that 510,301 figure. You get to add that to the number to get 23.722. And here's where the inflation comes in. It's lesser of 2% or CPI. CPI was almost 8% last year. It was extremely high, but we're stuck at the 2%. So you get 24.196. You subtract next year's pilot for that senior citizens apartment complex out. Then you get levy before exclusion. You get, you get, you're allowed to add back the capital expenditures net of aid for next year. Or, actually, is that, yeah, you get to add that back. So that's what I said, principal and interest on debt, the buses, the $100,000 project, minus all the stated on that, to get 24.725091 or 3.52. But as I stated, we're going to go well below that number. Yeah. So here's the second part of the budget, instructional. Talk a little bit about technology. And then I do have a library presentation with our new director, Amanda Merk, and cafeteria with Barb Murray. We'll discuss the cafeteria program. So on this second part instructional piece, we've got curriculum development supervision. So curriculum development is our administrator of educational services with the secretary, supplies, conferences, and then supervisions, the principals, assistant principals, their supplies, their conferences, their secretaries. There's a little bit of breakage. That's why you see a decrease of roughly 17,295. So same thing, we kept lines pretty much consistent except for salary per contract. We did have a secretary retire. We hired, you know, bringing in a new person. That's the breakage that you see. We also had a principal resign mid-year or in October. So there's a little bit of breakage there. Research, planning, evaluation, in-service training. This one, we have our BOSI's data analyst, one and a half days a week, model schools with Eric that we actually get reimbursed for. So the, the big area here, and then in-service materials conferences, summer curriculum, the software that we, that are attributed that code. But the big drop here, 14,069 is, we were in the BOSI's curriculum development, where we were able to get aid. We could have our teachers do curriculum development in the summer, submit that bill to BOSI's, and we get stated on that. But there really wasn't a share among the districts. I mean, it was very little, like you might share your curriculum somewhat. But, so the state said no to that. They're not allowing that anymore. So obviously, I took that out. We're not, we don't have that, incur that cost, and we don't get the aid on that anymore. So that was the decrease there. Teaching, that's our big line. So that's the pre-K to 12 salaries. All the conferences, textbooks, supplies, teaching assistance, teacher aides, pretty much 2.47. This is really, once again, going up through salaries per contract. That's really the only increase. Everything else, we held constant. Special education, I highlight in yellow because we will be discussing that in a later meeting. I'm going to meet with Brian shortly. We wait because he's doing annual reviews. And obviously, one kid could be $100,000. So we do want to wait. But I did roll over the budget, and I took all the new placements this year as, as a point in, I think as of, you know, a few weeks ago. So that is about a five-point, you know, a little over 5% increase because we did have a high-cost student going to BOSI's that came into our district. But this is something I will go, go through, and I do have contingent money in this line, and we will adjust accordingly to, you know, just to keep this tax levy lower. Occupational education, summer school and adult ed, adult ed program, really our driver's ed, and then we have adult ed after hours. We have revenue that offsets the cost of this. So that's kind of a break even program. Occupational ed, that's really what's driving the number, the $51,000 increase. That's about 680,000. And that is an occupational ed. And that's, so they take a five-year average, and our five-year average of students going to those programs through BOSI's has increased to 40.8 on average for five years from 38. So we were having more kids go to the BOSI's programs. We've actually had 45 kids the last two years. So that has increased the number. And then your charge per kid, per the five-year averages, that's how you're charged. So that's what attributes to the $51,000 increase. Library and AV is our two librarians, and the one that covers some of the, the middle school. Once again, it's the databases, the supplies, and their salary. So it's really just a salary increase that's driving that 4752. The next slide. Technology. This is what I discussed earlier when we had that Zscaler and that $50,000 hit that one code. This is the BOSI's code. This is the offset. So 50,000 came out of here, and then we increased, or I think it was 55,000. And then what we, what also happened in technology? So this is the Director of IT, Mike Olson, who's, who's presented a few months ago. The two network engineers, hardware budget, hardware's a big piece of it. And then, so what we did with this is, and then there's some software in this. But the hardware, a few years ago, we did an E-rate project where I added, I think, $150,000 to the hardware code, and we had revenue to offset it because it was a one-time project. As the revenue fell off last year, instead of taking the whole 150, I took some money out of that hardware code. I didn't take it all out. And then this year, I took a little more out to balance out the budget. But for example, years ago, we had, we had about 120,000 in the hardware code. Then we were up to 270. I still kept, I lowered it a little bit, but we're at 315,000. So I still kept money so we can have our Chromebook replacement plan and all, in all the items that we need with the hardware. The one good thing, I will say, is Kate Gerard was able to secure a grant for Chromebook purchase. And she was able to get that. We're actually going to use it in the next school year. We're going to do that in July 1st, or early July, we'll order it. It has to be done by December. So it's about, I think it was about 180 grand, 170 grand. So we're going to, the purchase that we did this year, that Mike did, and then what we're going to do next year will be in great shape with the Chromebooks. Kate Gerard was the one that was able to find that grant.
Question, what is that grant? What is the grant?
It's just, it was another E-rate source of funding that was, that you could apply for, for Chromebook or, you know, computer purchases. And she was able to find that. And she applied. And so, you know, some years you get something, some years you don't. But we were able to get that. So.
How much the fleet is that purchase? Is that amount?
So I'm trying to remember if it was, was similar purchase. I'm trying, Mike's.
You know, I, I'm more interested in what the, what the unit cost is right now, because I think that that's fluctuated over the last few years. And I, do we know, like, offhand?
I would have to check. I would have to check with Mike. I could get that answer. I I could get that answer. We'll get that answer for you.
Oh, three hundred.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's in that area.
Well, there's been, there's been a lot of um supply chain constraint. Um, and and prices will probably drop, but they never. You know, with inflation being what it is, it's not going to go back to where it was. And and when prices get squeezed up like that, they never come down as fast as they go up. So.
The good thing is we did do a big purchase this year because when Mike came in, you know, we couldn't get stuff with, you know, Giles left and we had a couple of years we were behind. So we did a major purchase to kind of get us up to speed. And then with this next one, it'll be the same amount. He said, we'll be, we'll be really great shape for five, six years, but we'll do a replacement plan slowly over the years too. Um. Then guidance, health, psychology, social worker, uh, all these areas. Remember, we we added the psychologist a couple of years ago to really help. You know, with everything we're doing with the students. Um. The uh, that cost is once again just salary driven to fifteen thousand eight twenty eight. That's also their supplies and conferences. Then co-curricular and athletics, it's a small increase. Actually, it's for the theaters. Uh, the three, now we have three shows, middle school, elementary and high school going again. They needed a little bit more money, so we added a little bit there. I did add some money to athletics, but I just relocated codes from the, there was some money in the Chevron and code uh that we had that we moved down for supplies and equipment. So we wanted to keep that flat also. So on the whole instruction going up three thirty nine nine one seven. And let's see what we have next. Yeah, let's see what's next. So if you kind of look at a draft now, the budget and this is the first two parts. You know, there might be a little bit of change, not much. And then I've got the third part that I update as well as possible, really waiting on health insurance rates and special ed. But if you can see there, the budget increase going up eight hundred fifty eight thousand four oh four, two point five five percent. If you look at the revenues, um, and I will be, there will be some adjustment to the interest income um on the next meeting for revenues, which will be going up. So that'll help us more. But the surplus right now, a hundred and forty two, one two six, that would be based on the three point five two cap. So if I took the surplus out, the hundred and forty two, we'd go to about two point nine percent right now. As I stated, um, we still have a couple of areas to look at. Um, but we also have some interest income that is going to be going up. So like I said, we're gonna, we want to get below that two point seven five. That's our goal. Okay. Okay, library budget. Um, actually Amanda is going to come up and present the good stuff, the more exciting, you know, about the program and such. I'm just going to briefly discuss this. We went over with C-Plaque, so we go through the line by line item of this budget. Uh, we el- reallocate all costs and transfer it to the library. So it's kind of like, what would it cost if it was a standalone? So there's a technology person, a custodial cost that, you know, the energy, everything. The increase is twelve thousand seven fifty four and pretty much we kept things flat. Um. Man has done a good job working with the friends. They've been funding us with other sources of money. We have some grants money. So we're in very good shape in the library. The reason for the increase is uh, just the cha- change of director was a single health insurance to a a couple, you know, married health insurance. So that's the only increase that we had. Um, but I'll have uh Amanda discuss the uh, the highlights of the library.
So while Sal's pulling up my slide deck, I'll just um. So while he's pulling up my slide deck, I'll just uh introduce myself. I think there are a few people here that I haven't met. Uh, so I'm Amanda Merk. I started as the new library director in the public library on January third. And prior to that, I've worked in all kinds of um different libraries, university libraries, law firm libraries, courthouse library. And um, public libraries in both Vermont and Massachusetts. This is my first public library in the state of New York. So far, everything has been going really well. I was attracted to this role in particular because this public library is part of the school district and it's a very unusual model. So I just had to come and uh see what it was all about. And so far, everything's been great. People have been very, very supportive. Um, the staff at the school certainly, but also the staff at the library. So now I have the very unusual task of giving you an annual report for twenty twenty two. Um, for a year that I was not a library director. Luckily, the the previous director left me all kinds of great um information to work with. Um, so I was able to put together um, a story of twenty twenty two at the Chatham Public Library. So I've included a couple of patron testimonials here. First one. I'll um, I'll read out, this is an incredible opportunity and a service to the community. I've been attending since inception. We have a chair yoga program on Zoom. Um, so that was somebody who attends that. And then Al Stumpf said he's found all the book discussion groups in which I participated to be very thought provoking and worthwhile. And a storytime um person, a little young person said, it's always fun at storytime. So two thousand and twenty two was a year of change and growth at the library. There was a real focus on increasing in-person programming. And I also see that they worked very hard to increase um diversity and inclusion. Both in programs and in the book collection. And if you take a look at the um image there. They received, the librarians received a grant and they started a Spanish story ti- storytime or story hour with Miss Sonia. And they were also, as part of the grant, able to purchase um a whole uh, a couple of shelves full of Spanish language and bilingual books for children. Uh, I think from like birth up to um school age children. So that was great. And we're going to be continuing that um now that I'm here as well. Um, I took a look back at all the programs they did. They added a lot of um craft making. You can see someone holding up her wreath that she made at the library. Um, this was through our adult uh craft night that we hold. Um, and that's been very, very popular. And then just an example of another creative program um was um through our summer reading program. They, I do not know how to pronounce that, but they learned how to make fish prints. Um, so focusing on that art and creativity. And then more from the wreath making workshop. And then musicians at an open mic outdoors on the library lawn. And I want to mention here that in the beginning of two of twenty twenty two and I would say right up until probably September. The librarians were still doing a lot of programs, either outdoors on the lawns, on the front lawns. Or um, they were having to reduce the numbers of people coming into the library at one time. Especially in the children's section, but that's no longer the case since I've been there. We we don't have any restrictions whatsoever now. So creating community, um, they started a monthly cookbook club and it brings people together in potlucks. Obviously those are done in person. They did them outdoors and now we're doing them inside. And then they did this um Chatham Public Library Community Conversation, a turning outward project. And I have a couple of members of the um Chatham Public Library Advisory Committee here tonight. And they worked on this um turning outward project where they did very extensive interviews with the public. Um, and found out all kinds of things that they would like to see in their library. So as we go forward and start our strategic planning, we will be using the material, at least some of the material gained from those turning outward project conversations with the community. Library connects patrons to nature and the environment. Um, it was hard to choose. There were so many programs and photographs of wonderful things that the librarians and the staff put together for patrons of all ages, not just children, but you can see some children planting the flowers in front of the library there on the right and then of course the Audubon. But they did um a pollinator series. So they actually went down and planted a pollinator garden um with some perennials that will come up year after year. Um, they worked on that. Uh, they they go on hikes. They have backpack explorer backpacks they can loan out. And so it's just a wonderful way of connecting people to nature. And then um some numbers. Um. So some statistics. Our visits to the library. So that first number there is um visits to the library are in-person visits to the library. And the way we count that it's not an exact science. We have a door counter. So it counts one on the way in and one on the way out. So we divide it in half. And I noticed that it went down a tiny bit from twenty twenty one and I talked to the library staff about that and they did say that they were, that's why uh during the times when I think the Omicron variant or other COVID related things were happening. And so they were restricting numbers of people into the library or they were doing outdoor programs. Our circulations were up, which is great. And our registered borrowers stayed about the same. Uh, so those are active, those would be considered active borrowers in our system. And then this is all about programs. So um I was actually really, really pleased to see that they were on it. They increased programming in twen- in uh twenty twenty two. So from three hundred and fifty five total programs for adults, teens and children um in twenty twenty one, they went up to four eighty five. The same with programs for youth. They were able to increase to one seventy and they increased uh the number of people attending the programs as well. Technology, these numbers stayed fairly similar to the numbers from um twenty twenty one. So I I just left them to stand alone, but you can see we get a lot of visits to the library website. Um, we're loaning out a lot of streaming series and films through our hoopla and our canopy products that we have and then um electronic books. And audiobooks are very popular and we did a hundred and forty one Zoom programs. So that was use of technology. Keeping connected, uh, I included uh some information about our chair yoga program, which is probably our most popular library program. I did a survey of the people who come to it and um it's, I surveyed seventy people and we don't get seventy people at every single class, but we have seventy people on the list. And we always have about twenty to twenty five people at every class, which is a good Zoom um number for attendance. We can go on to the next one. Yes, yeah, we um. So the mobile friendly and accessible website was, I believe, was completed in twenty twenty one. But it's, we're continuing to tweak it and add to it and make it even more user friendly. And in our statistics for this year, we were able to um offer twenty nine thousand two hundred and ten digital resources. So those are all the different key books, audiobooks. Films, TV series, et cetera, music. And I wanted to say a special thank you uh to the friends. So we have the Friends of the Chatham Public Library. They're really our booster group and they're wonderful. Um, and I want to thank all of our donors too. We have many people who volunteer and support the library in different ways. And so we appreciate all of that. The Friends calls an author series. Uh, they're about to have another one in April with a local author named Nancy Costaldo and she will be speaking about her book. I think it's called When the Waters Run Dry. It's about um the water crisis and and the climate. So the Friends of the Library also funded a really innovative uh collection of useful library materials. We call it the Library of Things. So instead of books, you could borrow this Singer sewing machine. Um, it comes with a DVD on how to sew. And and I think you can, there's like a little case that has all the thread and everything you need. And then there are all kinds of things. Um, the one that I I was laughing about, I found a, it's a tall you can plant bulbs without bending over. So actually, if you have mobility issues, it would be fantastic. You could still get out, but you can poke it into the ground and then drop your bulb from the top through a tube and then just cover it over. But they have all kinds of games and uh really interesting things that are available for people uh so that they don't have to purchase that. They can come to the library and borrow it for free. And then these are some of our partnerships. Obviously you can see right up in the left-hand upper corner, uh, Chatham Central School District. You're not really a partner because we're part of you, but I I see a lot of partnerships between the school and the library. Uh, and one thing that is um upcoming that I'm really excited about is I had a chance to meet with Lisa Rood, Rood. Um, and we are talking about having some uh focus groups at the library for English language learning learner families. Um, so we're working on that together, which is just a great, great uh partnership. But the Columbia County Libraries Association um is a, is a great um network, the Friends again, um, and other, other groups, the Columbia Land Conservancy. We do a lot of programs for children with them. These were some of the um, kind of pop-up uh or library beyond the walls of the library events, uh Camp Hill. Um, and then Summer Fest, I believe, and then the Chatham um Farmer's Market, which we'll be going to again. So looking out ahead, uh, I I have a real vision for continuing to create vital engaging programs for everyone, um especially intergenerational programs. Um, especially delivering book talks and having resources that are focused on uh the conservation of the environment and connection to nature. Uh, and we're going to be doing some energy efficient upgrading to our Canaan Branch Library. Um, putting in possibly mini splits to um, you know, help have a energy efficient uh cooling and heating system there. And I'm taking um training on um diversity and inclusion in the library. So creating collections, but also creating programs uh that really um serve everyone. Couple upcoming programs, poetry and writing instruction, poetry month is April, so we're excited about that. Um, you can't see it behind the uh Zoom screen there, but it's the art of bookmaking. We have a volunteer who has a uh special um education in book and making books and then learning to force spring bulbs, which we all need right now. Thank you to the library staff. They're wonderful, great, a great group of people to work with and uh very knowledgeable and good at what they do. That's it. So thank you for supporting the library. Without you, there is no us. Thank you very much. Thank you. Did anyone have any questions for me?
This is just more of a comment. I thought that was a really really well done presentation. Um, you know, you're new here, but I think what you discovered really shows that we're at the what you've embraced. And I can tell that you really um you know, very much engaged. So it's very exciting to see.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If 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 you're hearing any uh lack of engagement on the board, it's because our our C-Plaque committee uh like updates us quite frequently and we, we have talks about the library all the time. Um, but they're usually via our proxies. So um, but uh, we're all very interested in what's what goes on over there. Uh, okay, so.
Next up, I have uh Barb Murray, supervisor of the cafeteria. I'll just briefly discuss, um, you know, we have a uh item where we transferred to cafeteria. It's actually going down about five hundred dollars. Um, Barb and I went through all the lines and all the codes and she's going to discuss a couple of her slides, but even though we've been losing enrollment, we've been keeping, participation has actually grown. And the reimbursement rates have increased over the years. So we're actually doing very well. Um, that's why we actually can decrease the code a little bit. I think when I first came here, I think we were doing about one hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy thousand a library. So we brought that down. And she's done an excellent job of really working with the students and trying to, you know, it's not always easy to have great meals with all the restrictions, but she does a great job coming up with some innovative ideas. So I'll let Barb discuss some of the slides on this.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all well. So uh first we'll start with the increase uh sales with our meals and uh snacks. Uh, so far this year, we've seen an increase in the number of snacks students are buying. We offer most of the same snacks on the line and in our vending machine. Vending machine sales aren't really there, but they're buying double, if not triple the amount of snacks on the line using their prepaid accounts. Uh, they are also uh buying double lunches quite often. Uh, we see an increase of that as well. Um, increased cost for food and supplies. Um, increased cost for food and supplies, as with everyone who goes grocery shopping, everything is costing more. Um, because of that, I have to look at all the products that we currently offer and see if I can find an alternative that's comparable. It's cost effective, the kids eat. Um, sometimes I can, sometimes I can't. I also have to look at what the um, what we menu to see if we can continue to do those items. To again, be cost effective and have the kids eat it and things like that. One of the things that happened this year was um with our supplies for paper products. I couldn't get the disposable trays that we use mainly at the middle school. Um, but as luck would have it, a company reached out and said if we bought a pallet of trays. You know, that we could do a cost of um seven cents versus the thirteen cents I was paying. So for half a year of trays, it would save us about three thousand dollars. So we, we took advantage of that, brought them in. Uh, they are biodegradable too, so that kind of was a plus. Um, the next thing is supply chain assistance. These are funds that are given to us by the New York State Child Nutrition that are intended to be used exclusively to purchase domestic food products to help us deal with challenges such as unanticipated cancellation of food and reduced ability of certain foods. So so far this year, we received a little over fifty thousand dollars. So that has definitely helped our bottom line. So the next thing I wanted to go over were the. The, the um meal comparisons. So what I'm showing you here. Is two thousand and nineteen and twenty, so this is pre-COVID from September to January and this current school year. I'm giving you the number of breakfasts we served in total for those months, the ADP or the average daily participation. Our enrollment and our um percentage of participation. So if you compare those two years, you'll see that our enrollment is down roughly about fifty-ish students. But our numbers are higher this year than they were then for both breakfasts. And if we go to the lunch slide, you'll see that as well. As you'll see, it was forty-eight, now it's fifty-two. And so, you know, it's comparable to that year versus this year for about, you know, fifty, fifty students or so less. Um, and our free and reduced percentage um is really pretty much the same as well. Um, so we're doing pretty decent in, in those numbers. All right, and um, so one last thing that I just wanted to mention um was menu items. Um, I'm trying different menu items and hope to increase, you know. Participation and have kids be excited about something different. We've done things along the line of um a French fry taco bowl. So basically, it's like a taco salad, but with french fries as your base instead of um nacho chips. And it went over very well. Uh, we did a Southwest Rice Bowl. If you eat at Chipotle, it's like their burrito bowls, it's that kind of style. High school kids loved it, so did the middle school. I think it was too much for the elementary school. Um, uh, and then the other thing that's strange that was, uh, was a toasted cheese and a croissant. Um, but the kids asked for it since we started it. They really liked it. It was like some buttery and, you know, they, they liked it. Uh, and the last thing that we tried differently was fish sticks at the elementary school. Again, a big surprise that they ate it. I was really surprised. Fish sticks don't usually go very well. Um, but, you know, we gotta try things and see if it'll go. I have some new items coming in April for breakfast. Um, I found a Dutch waffle, which is like. A funnel cake in waffle form and it's fifty-one percent whole grain. So it's, you know, better for you than you would, you know, get at the fair. Um, so we're going to put that on the menu and we're going to bring back um the pancake and sausage on the stick. Kids love it. So hopefully these are some items that'll get them excited and keep them coming in and keep them buying support. So, but that was pretty much all I had. Does anybody have any questions?
With those trays that you were talking about being disposable, is, is that something that we deliberately are doing to make them disposable? Or can, is there a dishwasher so that we could have like trays that can be just washed?
At the middle school, it's not set up that way. There's no good place to return reusable trays. So that becomes a hazard of them falling and, you know, kids tripping over them or breaking them. So before I even came here, they've always just used disposables at that building. And then we use them at this building and um at the elementary school. You know, when we're low on the reusable trays until we order more or um if we're shorthanded or if, God forbid, the dishwasher breaks down. So, but it's mainly the middle school just doesn't have a safe way for the kids to return the trays to us. So that's why they've always done it that way.
It's worth noting, this comes up every year. And so here's, here's the missing piece that's outside the lunch service, it's facilities issue, which is the commercial dishwashers. Um, require a lot of water, a lot more water than your home dishwasher. And the impact both from a water cost perspective or system perspective, but also the environmental impact of like that amount of water being processed. It's, it's not an easy decision to say that reusable is um more economical or, or more environmentally friendly than a disposable tray. So um, it's, it's great. We moved off the Styrofoam, but. We keep looking at that, the, the water thing, and it, it may come up in facilities, but um in the middle school, but uh that's where we're at now.
I just want to add a couple of footnotes. Um, as the board knows, from my Friday report, um, we had a visit from New York State Education Department's uh child, child nutrition program. Uh, they recently did, did an audit, a review and stellar findings of uh just very impressive, I mean, no findings. Um, the audit uh was, was spectacular. And it's no small surprise because it's of your efforts and certainly supported by uh Mr. Try. So thank you on behalf of the district. I've been a party to those audits in other places and they don't always go as well. So thank you for uh doing that. And second, um, just as a notation, both houses have included funding for universal meals. Um, there's a two hundred and eighty million dollar uh item that's being, um, you know, it, it being proposed. There's a lot of advocacy. Um, just recently, the um PTO, New York State PTO Association and other organizations like NICE and um, and the um Superintendent and Principal Associations have all asked the state to consider universal meals for all like we did during the pandemic. So we're hopeful that maybe that will be something that's in the near future.
That would be great. It would help everybody. Any other questions?
I promise you, I planned on it. I really did. But see how I didn't have power at home? I couldn't even do it at home. I did promise. I'll have to do it next time. I'll send it with Mike.
I, I do have one question. Um, and it's. I saw that our, our breakfast change helped and we were wondering if those breakfast numbers would stay up. And it seems like they, they have. And I think that we changed protocol in the morning in the elementary school, right? We're asking them if they want breakfast in a different way than we used to, I think.
Um, we're just going back to the old ways.
Oh, it is the old way there.
For the last couple of years, it was in a bag and you got everything whether you wanted it or not. This time they can actually come through, they can pick the, the items they want, they get a few more choices and they go back to eating in the cafeteria.
Was that from the beginning of the year? So the numbers are still higher there in, in a really material way. Um, and I think that's great. Of course, the, the high school kids are losing interest in lunch and breakfast. We're back to the same configuration in terms of service that we were pre-COVID there. I don't know. Do you have anything to add in terms of behavior change, pre and post-COVID?
Pretty much the same. I think one of the biggest things with the high schools, we have, you know, students have different views on what they want to eat. And as much as we try to make the changes and offer them, it's just not always. It's what they want to choose. You know, we offer the veggie options, we have all the salads and um we're trying different sandwiches and things like that. But it's just not there.
Is it, is it more of a veggie request? What, what is the?
Uh, we have a, just a small handful of students who are, who are vegetarians. Um, so we try to make sure that, you know, they're aware that we have it. If you want it, we have it. Um, we tell them all the time, you can preorder too. If you want a certain salad, we can make it for you. Just let us know. If you want a veggie burger on a day that you don't think we would make it, just ask. We'd be more than happy to, to put it together. We do have a few students who in the past have said, hey, I'm kind of feeling a veggie burger today. Could you cook me one at lunch? And they will. Yeah, but I'm not sure if it gets around enough, no matter how much time, you know, we spend letting them know it's there and telling the student government. So I don't know if it's all there, you know, for them to cross the, the district.
You mean if enough students know that?
Right, right. As much as we try to advertise and, and let them know, if they're not all reading it or seeing it, that might be, you know, part of it.
Maybe some signage. I, I don't know.
We have signage, you know, but nobody reads. Us as adults do it too. Yeah, there you go. They might read that.
That was it for me. Anyone else on the?
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Yes, thank you to Amanda, Barb and Andy. Yeah. Andy, I don't know if you got to sleep last night, so you can certainly leave.
We just went over a whole long list of budget items. Does anyone have any questions on those other items that were long ago, like half an hour ago?
We're good to go on?
I was thinking about what you mentioned, bus. Um, this didn't come up in finance and I was just curious. The discussion inquiry uh surrounding EV buses. Um, that, that, that's obviously not impacting this budget, right? But uh, I'm just wondering in terms of.
So based on that extension, that gives us some time to do some more due diligence on that. Um, the buses that are included, have we done transportation? That's next. Okay. Yes. Couple miscellaneous items. I, I too wanted to extend my appreciation to all of our um basketball players and coaches. It was an exciting um March Madness of our own. Um, I didn't have the pleasure of the final game because of the play. But um, those three that I did go to were, were um amazing. So congratulations, the, uh, the boys and uh the coaches should be uh extremely proud of, of where they, what they achieved. And also, um, I had the pleasure of um attending the Mama Mia on Saturday and it was phenomenal. Um, enjoyed it. Um, my wife and, and daughter um uh equally um enjoyed it. And uh my hat's off to not only those that were on stage, but those who um play supporting roles backstage and in the sound booth. Everything was just awesome. So uh really, it is, it amazes me for a small district how we can turn out that kind of talent and that kind of production. A testament to the program and, and the theater production class that we have too. I think that's an amazing um addition enhancement to our, to our overall offerings here. Capital Project, it's been so long since we've had a board meeting that we actually had a Capital Project vote. And I know um Chris is going to make, do some updates during the uh board committees, the facility committee uh in particular. But I just wanted to um start out by a huge thank you to everyone who helped uh disseminate information. But more importantly, to our community for supporting this initiative. Um, we know there are a lot, there are a lot of factors that people weighed in making their uh decision whether they're supported or not. And in the end, we had a lot of instructional enhancements that we included that uh we felt were, were necessary. And I'm so pleased that we're moving forward with that and more to come in the um, the finance or the facilities committee report. Voter survey, uh, we, we did a voter, voter exit survey. Um, it yields some really good data. It's a, it's publicly available um on our website on the Capital Project page. Uh, it'll also be made public through the agenda uh for this board meeting. I, I don't want to go over it. There were a lot of details. I think the one um question that, that really stuck out in my mind and will be extremely useful was the question regarding how people prefer to receive information. In that particular question, it says, what were the best sources of information? And I think you could extrapolate that question regarding the Capital Project and, and kind of generalize it more to the way that they can that we're, we're our community consumes information from us. And certainly, um, the district newsletter still came as a very, very high um interest item. And I think that speaks to the fact that we make some assumptions, we make two assumptions um when we're trying to uh disseminate information. One is that, you know, everybody is connected electronically in our community and I don't believe that's the case. Um, or if you're not, if you are connected electronically, you may not have a particular interest or um justification to go to our website or view our Facebook page. So um, Adam Charbonneau and myself, our communication specialists, have taken a closer look at this. And this will inform uh future communications. Uh, one uh immediate example was our pre-K registration. In the past, we may have very well put out a um email and a, and a text and put it on the website and Facebook. But learning what we learned from here and thinking that our target audience for, for kindergarten register or for pre-K registration wasn't necessarily a parent who's already connected to the district, we turned around and invested in sending out the postcards. So that was really a result of taking a look at the survey results and saying that, you know, any good communication program, any effective communication program is using a variety of media and a variety of methods to reach our target. The other one that um uh did get high um response, and I think we can never, um, although it's a dwindling um offering, is local newspapers. Um, there were quite a few people that got their information through the local newspaper. So uh just for the record, we do send press releases on a regular basis to the Columbia Paper and the Register Star. And uh they're very generous with their um, with their, their copy space. We do tend to see almost everything we send them get published. And uh as a result, we know that um, yeah, again, that's another way that people are getting information about us. So uh just, that was just kind of a, at a glance, some of the survey results that we have. And uh just again, very thankful for the tremendous overwhelming support that we had for that Capital Project. Um, in terms of the pre-K registration, um, as most of you know, that pre-K registration runs from March first till April fifteenth. So we're not even, we're about a third of the way through. And as you might suspect, when we launched that link, um, we had a tremendous um surge of initial um, initial uh participation. As of today, we're up to thirty-two registrants. Um, I caution you because those are not vetted and I already know that there's a few in there that um perhaps will not meet the um age requirements. Um, we just wanted to refresh everyone's memory that the way that universal pre-K runs, you need to be four by December first. Uh, for this first cohort, you would need to be four by December first of twenty-three, but you cannot be five. And although we had a couple of parents reach out and ask for um, uh, you know, consider additional consideration with birthdays that don't fall into that area, we are, we are kind of bound uh to main, to follow those guidelines because of, of the funding sources that we expect to use. So that's going really well. Right now, that means that we very well may be in a situation where we can run the two sections as we uh expected to do as a minimum and not necessarily have to run a lottery. Um, if we um have fewer than, uh, fewer registrants than the capacity, then uh conceivably, everybody who meets the guidelines will get in. Uh, if more people come in afterwards, then we would um prioritize them on, on a waiting list. Uh, so more to come, but we're really excited uh in terms of um offering that program next year. And we're in good shape in terms of facilities and staffing and uh we'll be ready to um welcome our, our youngest learners uh in the fall. And uh just to kind of as a side note, uh, we as a district, since we're already doing it for our targeted pre-K students, uh, we will be offering transportation. But again, you need to have turn four to take advantage of that um transportation.
So, on that question of the, the four, the four birthdays, obviously, we have to follow. Who would we kind of lobby on the philosophy?
That would be the, uh, I, I would believe that would be the New York State Education Department in terms of early learning. Um, and perhaps the governor who um, you know, has set aside a tremendous amount of new funding for pre-K as well.
I mean, just philosophically, it didn't.
You're asking about um an exception for pre-K three, is that right?
No, no, no. Um, there are children whose birthday will be four, let's say, in October or November, but they turn, but, but their parents were planning on keeping them an extra year home before they put them. So that means they have to make a choice of whether they send them as a four-year-old.
It's actually an issue the next year, right? So these people would want their child not to participate in. Want their child not to participate in pre-K this year, but to hold them off till next year, and next year they would be, they'd be two.
They would turn five, be forty-seven.
Wouldn't they be at the age range for a kindergarten?
Right.
Registration at that time?
But that's.
Could be, but that doesn't necessarily, there's, there's a lot of um.
Is your concern that they might want to retain them for pre-K, even though they are of the age that they would, would be classified as kindergarten? Maybe they're not ready? Is that the?
What I'm thinking is, I know particularly a few people who were not planning on putting their, they were gonna wait that extra year. For their child to, to go to kindergarten because their fall birthdays, and it's, it's awful, it's a difficult for many fall birthdays. To, you know, survive, let's say, so to speak, or, or do well in kindergarten. And so for the years I taught kindergarten, I'll be honest with you, the fall birthdays I had. I'd say three or four were really ready, and other, a lot of them ended up in pre-first or modified first, but we don't have those programs anymore. So some parents were holding their kids back that extra year. But if they do, if they do that, and then want to put their kids in pre-K next year, which is when they would, the year before they're gonna send their kids to school, they can't. Because their child will be five before December.
I'm, I'm following everything except for I don't understand what the concern is.
Because if it. There, if, they would probably be educationally, it would be better for them to wait that extra year.
To, to what?
Yes.
Wait the extra year.
They have that choice. They still have that choice, but if they choose not to put them in pre-K this fall, because they don't feel they're mature enough. Then they have to send them to kindergarten the next year. They can't send them to pre-K.
But is, is the concern that they're not ready for kindergarten?
Um, my concern would be, having taught those levels, that if we put a four-year-old in pre-K, can we guarantee that's going to? Give them the maturation? Just being there and get, being in the academic experience doesn't necessarily mean that they're gonna mature and be able to be ready for kindergarten. Next, the following, be successful in kindergarten.
I'm still missing the thread here.
Let me ask a que, let me ask a question. So, and I'm not an early learning specialist, but would the detriment potentially be that they? They go to pre-K and let's say they do go to pre-K, but they're not ready for kindergarten. There's gonna be a gap.
Right.
Right? There might be a year, so they, one scenario would be, they come to the pretty uh pre-K program because they're eligible, but then a parent decides not to. Send them to kindergarten. They are, they really, we have nothing in between.
Or if they don't send them to the pre-K this year, because they just don't think they're ready. Then they can't go to pre-K the following year because they're gonna be five before kindergarten.
Can I ask a question? Because I, I think I understand your concern, but I don't understand the problem. So I was under the impression, but I have worked in early childhood, that um there, there are circumstances with which we will retain a child. In kindergarten for an additional year or sometimes first grade. Is that not the solution to the problem that you're, I, I don't understand.
You, I don't believe in terms of the funding that you can have that same um protocol for pre-K.
You can't, you can't, but I, but she's talking about a problem that occurs in kindergarten, but I don't.
Oh.
But the problem is the long-term outcome of that student's educational.
I, I see what you're on to. So if a, if a parent were to give kindergarten a chance and the student was successful, there is a possibility that they could be held back in kindergarten.
But that, that's, maybe it, for all the years I was here. We, it was, it was very, very unusual or rare after we. Cut the pre-first program to retain kids in kindergarten. They were pushed up and they maybe be retained by about second grade.
It sounds like maybe the concern you have. Is around that second point, the pushed up, and maybe we should have someone speak on that about our, our early childhood program? Because I think that the concern is that they're, that they're. That they never recover, right? Over a period of years, but there is an opportunity.
Well, they might, they might recover, but, but the, the recovery, instead of, let's say, retaining them in kindergarten, where they probably don't understand. It's, at least it didn't used to be normal to, for retention in kindergarten here in Chatham. For all the years I was here. They were pushed on, we had a pre-first or they went to first, and then many, many times kids were retained in second grade. And by then, they know if they're being retained, that their friends are going on.
That sounds like not an ideal time to retain them if we potentially know that it would be beneficial earlier, but I, I would want someone to present on that.
I, I.
I'm hope, I'm hoping that the, the pre-K that we're putting, putting in is going to um. Help these kids you're, you're talking about, and they'll be ready for kindergarten. It's not like they.
It might, it, it, we would hope.
That's why we're doing it.
Right, but if they're not, there's a difference between an educational background and a maturation and maturity. And they may be able to academically learn those facts, but they may not be able to sit still. And do some of the other things so that they get distracted easily, and that's a maturity level. That, that has nothing to do. Pre-K can help it to some degree, but it doesn't necessarily make it hap, you know, not, it's just like saying every child in first grade is ready to learn to read. Not every child is, is ready in first grade. They might not be ready till second or third, but, and that's why you have your Hawthorne Valleys and other school systems and, you know, but. Basically. Kids were.
Um, I know Stacy's listening in and she can share with Kristen tomorrow, perhaps next month, um, or next meeting, I should say. We could hear a little bit more about what our practice is. I know um, we, we deliberate very carefully before we hold anyone back. Kristen and I have had many conversations in terms of the, the benefit, the cost benefit of that, right? And I don't mean financial cost, I mean, cost to uh, you know, holding someone back. Um, but there are times where the child is not, um, you know, adolescent development or childhood development isn't there, so I would rather. Uh, I would rather have um Kristen and others speak to that.
And like to discuss.
Absolutely. Um, kind of along the same vein, and, and you know this from one of my prior reports that, you know, parents have inquired that um. Uh, we will be providing a pre-K program, but that creates yet another challenge for them in terms of before and after care. So, you know, we have approached Kids Club. And they're working on trying to get licensed to provide a service so that um parents will be able to choose before, after, or both. To augment um our program and, you know, some parents had indicated that without that, they, it may be very difficult for them to participate. So we are, we are continuing to um look forward to that. I believe they have someone visiting and um uh. Surveying um their program to see if that's a possibility.
Um, Sal, have a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Would that impact that thirty-two number um in terms of parents, that their? The participation of uh.
Well, I, I think we asked for everyone to register regardless of the circumstance, so my assumption is that. Um, it would, it may impacted by if the program isn't in place, a few may not be able to participate. I really feel like we've captured. All potential, um, at least the way we've uh advised people, put your name in so we know that you're interested. If it turns out. That when we notify you that there's an available slot, if you decide that you can't take advantage of that slot because you don't have the before and after care, then you could make that decision at that time. Is that a, is that kind of?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, it was thirty-two, you said, registration?
Thirty-two right now, yes.
How many of those do we think represent um the demographic that the targeted pre-K would have already served?
It, it's hard to know because until we do the screening in June, um, we would only be able to speculate based on prior cohorts. That we're probably looking at twelve to fifteen.
We don't really know if that's a full section or not.
Well, remember, we're not going to segregate. We're not going to separate. This is the, this.
I'm just thinking of it in terms of the increased seat count and thinking about, we have room for this many sections, or um, it sounds like. Um. Yeah, but maybe without the segregation, it doesn't matter, but. Uh, I'm just curious in terms of how much of this is, is expansion and how much of this is normal registration.
Speculating, but I think it's a, it's going to be a fifty percent expansion. Right? I think we're gonna end it just roughly. If we have fifteen targeted students now, we end up with thirty, thirty-five uh total, we're probably gonna double. Is that, that's a hundred percent, right?
Yeah. No, no, I understood what you meant though.
Okay, um. Yes, and, and remember, we're, we're shooting for class sizes of eighteen, maximum eighteen, so that we keep the teacher TA ratio. Uh, where we don't need a second um staff person in the room. And as I've mentioned before, right now, uh, we already have a targeted pre-K, so we're praying. We're paying a targeted pre-K teacher out of general fund, and we are going to be reducing a section of kindergarten. Um, and we have um at least one staff, if not several. Who are interested in being the second pre-K teacher, and you're gonna see from the phase ones, which we kind of missed in Mike's budget portion, so I'm gonna put back in. Um, how we're gonna utilize that extra FTE to benefit all students in the school. We're gonna get back to that in a moment. Um, here's the big announcement for this evening, that petitions to run for the school board will be um available beginning this Friday, the seventeenth. Um, they can be um. Uh, obtained by uh contacting our district clerk. Um, Debbie is out, but certainly Diane has all the information. Uh, between eight and four PM, so anyone interested in running uh for a school board seat, uh, we have three seats available. Uh, this year, and those petitions need to be back at the clerk's office on Monday, April seventeenth at five PM. Uh, there are three, three-year terms, uh, beginning July first of twenty-three, running to twenty-six, and um we have expiring terms of. Uh, Matt Fish, uh Patricia Wilson and Mary Ann Piero are our three uh current board members who seats are up for reelection. Um, the drawing for the names on the ballot will be, will take place on Tuesday, the eighteenth at nine AM in the clerk's office. Uh, we do have two voter registration dates, two opportunities to come and register, April twenty-sixth from two to six PM. In the MED library and Wednesday, May tenth, um, from four to eight. We'll make sure all this information gets to be made publicly available. Uh, remember to, to run for the school board, you have to be at least eighteen years of age. You need to be a citizen of the United States, and you need to be a resident of the district for thirty days. Um.
Thirty.
Thirty, yes. Um, I was gonna say thirty years, but that would be a little, that, that would be a little limiting, huh?
Is it, it's, it's a month? I forget what the petition time line is.
Yes, April, uh, March seventeenth to April seventeenth, yes. Um. And just because we like to be transparent, names must either appear in our personal registry book, so you come and register, or on the Columbia County Board of Elections. List in order to cast your vote. Absentee applications will be available Friday, April twenty-first to all qualified voters. They need to be returned to the district clerk by five PM. Uh, uh, the night of the vote, which is May sixteenth. Didn't mention that, but May sixteenth uh is the um universal voting date in New York State this year. And uh the application for absentee ballots must be received at least seven days before the election on May ninth. Um, and they need to be returned, as in ballots to be mailed to the voter on or before the fifteenth of May. Um, copies of the budget uh and required attachments will be available to the public upon request by Friday, April twenty-eighth. And there will be a public hearing on the budget, which will take place at the Tuesday, May ninth, board meeting right here in the library at six PM. Um. Since uh school is in session that day, we will follow all safety protocols like we do for the Capital Project vote. We'll have a hall monitor in place, and uh we will have the SRD. Um, present uh to make sure that. We don't have any issues. Any questions about the upcoming board petition?
Did you say it was the fifteenth to the sixteenth?
For the.
The vote.
May sixteenth.
May.
Tuesday, May sixteenth. Yes.
Do we usually advertise like the Columbia Paper or whatever that we're looking for people that might be interested in serving on the board?
Yes, Adam will prepare, after tonight, Adam will prepare a press release, giving them all this information so that um we can.
Be good to generate some.
Absolutely.
Excited about or thinking about.
For sure. Um, let me, I, I have one more item, uh, then we can go back to the uh phase ones. Um.
In your um packet for tonight's meeting, you will, you would have received a draft of the um calendar for next year, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. It seems odd for me to say that. Can't believe we're um in almost twenty-four. Uh, there, there are only a couple notations that I wanted to mention. Um. There's something just, you know, calendars vary from year to year. This particular calendar um is one of those years where the school year starts out a little early. Um, where Labor Day is, is September fourth. We are going to go back to having two staff development days upfront, the fifth and sixth, and students will begin on September seventh. What's different about this calendar is um it goes right into the very last week of June. Um, Regents, the last Regents. Is on June twenty-fifth, and the rating day is on the twenty-sixth, which will be the last day of school. Uh, we typically end that prior week, so. Um, you know, graduation, we'll have to figure that out, whether it's the evening of the twenty-sixth. Um, which is likely, I haven't had chances to, to talk to John and iron out those details, but it will be somewhere uh in that close proximity. Um. Don't think there's any other um. Really big anomalies. The only thing that I will mention, and this, this is very, again, it's, it's dependent on the calendar. Next year, because of the flexibility um between pupil days and the four uh superintendent's conference days that we're allowed to have by. Regulation, uh, and we get credit for them as being a day of uh attendance or day of session, will bring us up to a hundred and eighty-six, which leaves us with six. Uh, snow days next year. And since I've been here, we've traditionally had five or six. This year, we had four, which made it really challenging. And so next year, it gives us a little flexibility. Um. No, we um, well, I'll, I'll give you a different report on that. Uh, we've got. We, Tuesday's day is a little bit in question right now based on the governor's um state of emergency uh and what it may have lacked for schools. And thankfully, because the four towns um stepped up and did a local um state of emergency that covered us for today, we have to go back and, and. We're working with legal on, on the semantics, so I don't want to misspeak tonight, but um there, one of the scenarios is that we. We have possibly used our fourth snow day on Tuesday, and we will have no more. We will be doing remote instruction from this point forward, because we'd hate to have to come back. During the April break to use any uh of the vacation days, but we're more to come on that.
I have one question on the, the capstone. Are we moving that back to May?
Yes, um, I met with, that's a good point. Thank you, um, Beth. Um, the senior team, we, you know, we, we can't thank them enough. I see that Jen is, is um, and, and, and we've got a. Teacher, uh, Mike Grace has joined us tonight as well. Um, the senior, uh, John and I met with the senior team. Um. And they have asked to go back to having a later day for the senior capstone. You know, we tried it the last two years, we moved it up to kind of the February timeframe. Uh, the first year, we had some challenges with some of the AP English students. Um, they really feel that um. For various reasons, including um once the seniors. Participate in the capstone, they don't want to send this message that their year is over in February. So there were a variety of reasons why they took a look at it. And have asked us, and we're, we're more than happy to accommodate them, uh, to move it to Friday, May seventeen. And uh so what we would do is, we would have a um. A small session in the morning uh with students so that we retain our session day, and then um there would be an early dismissal, and then um the whole. District would convene on the, at the high school to take care of the senior capstone um presentation, so that's what we're doing. Okay, um, you're not adopting this tonight. This was your first look at it, so if you have any questions, please reach out to me. Um, if not, we will ask you to approve it at, at the next meeting. All right, give me a second. I'm gonna bring up phase ones, and, and Mike, thanks for hanging in there, because um I was really pleased to see that. Uh, Mike is with us tonight. One of the uh phase ones actually was uh proposed by him, and since he's here, I'm gonna put him on the spot and have him come up and tell you about it himself. So. Let me just share this screen. We actually have eight, which is phenomenal. Uh, we've gone through years where we had one, two, three. During the pandemic, we had none. Because we were trying to survive, and now we've got our instructional staff. With some really creative ideas, and I should say our administrators as well. So um, here are the phase one proposals for this year. Um. I'm gonna start out by, and Mike, I think yours is, I, the high school comes kind of towards the end. So um, I think we've mentioned this a little bit, this kind of um dovetails with um our pre-K program. I'll try to. What I'll do is I'll give you an overview, try to go through them pretty efficiently. I'll try to, what I'll do is I'll give you an overview, try to go through them pretty efficiently, and then we can, you can ask any questions. But the short of this is, the format is to tell you kind of a little bit about what the phase one is. Talk about its justification, and then more importantly, because this is kind of the budget presentation, talk to you whether there's a financial impact or not, or if there's simply a reallocation of resources, including teachers or reallocation of resources that we currently already have built into the budget. This first one is, we, we have two full-time speech pathologists, and then we also have an independent contract for one point five days a week through an outside provider. That provider has had extreme difficulty over the last few years, but particularly this year has, has been able to, has not been able to provide us consistent service, in some cases, no service at all. We are working with legal to figure out that whole situation, but that needless to say, you know, everybody is finding human resource constraints across K twelve schools. There are no exception, but that means that our students are potentially impacted. The good news is our two in-house providers have provided all the mandated services that are required. And to every extent possible, try to minimize the impact on students, but it has not been ideal. So we came up with this concept because it is very common that preschool students do receive quite often, quite a bit of speech language services. Those services, as you've heard in a previous presentation, are the requirement of the Columbia County, has to provide all special education services to pre K students. We approached them because they have challenges with finding providers as well. And so we said, this could be a symbiotic relationship. So the idea is that we would hire a full-time speech pathologist who would provide approximately half the time with pre K students and half the time with our current students where we're, that we're normally being served by the outside contract. We then approached Columbia County, who said that they would then reimburse us for the services that we would be providing for preschool students. And we would just have to worry about the the difference. And so you're looking at this, the cost differential, Mr. Chuddy and and Mr. and Brian Simon took a look at this, and it would roughly be about twenty-two thousand dollars if the individual required an individual health plan and about thirty-seven thousand dollars for a family plan. We are excited about this because not only will we be able to make sure and ensure that our preschool students receive the proper speech and language services, which we know that early intervention is essential to their, to their growth, but also to better serve our own students with some more consistency of some having our own staff person. So we, we are really excited about this proposal. Should we go? Do you want to ask questions? Want to do them all and then or go individually?
I think we should just run through them all and come back, if you guys can hold your questions.
Okay. The second, as you know, we had a, we, we had our second kind of security audit, we did one in two thousand nineteen. We decided to do another one this past fall, coming off the pandemic, making sure that we're, you know, security and safety is top of mind here in the district. One of the recommendations was to expand our, expand the technology that we use for visitor management. A couple of years ago, just before the pandemic, we did, we embarked in a pilot of a system called Raptor, a lot of schools are using it, I think Fred Tocanik is using it. We, the, the idea there is we put it in the middle school, we, we would pilot it, we would then evaluate it, and we would expand it to other schools. We didn't have a lot of visitors, visitors during the pandemic, so thus we weren't able to really exercise, put it through its paces, but since then we have, and we, we think it'll improve our visitor management, and it was a recommendation of the consultant, not a large lift here. The initial, the first year in the, in the, in the two buildings would be about two thousand dollars for some hardware, and then there's an ongoing licensing costs of about eight hundred and thirty-five dollars per student. The Raptor system is a system whereby which visitors present on their first visit to the school. Their driver's license, the driver's license is scanned into the system. It is retained for future visits to make it more efficient. And then that system on the back end runs a very simple sex offender database check on the individual to make sure and ensure that we're not allowing someone in the building that we would, would need to restrict access to our students. So that's the Raptor system, expanding into M E D and C H S.
It was per year, not.
Oh. Oh, did I say per student? I'm sorry. Oh, that would be very expensive. I meant the licensing would be eight hundred and thirty-five dollars per like that. Fred, thank you for picking up on that. I hate when people do that when they speak. Just thinking it might not be a bad time to be a vendor of the Raptor system. This is, this is one that came to us through a combination of Dr. Rude and Kristen Reno. As you know, we have put a lot of emphasis this past year or two on literacy with our teachers participating in the letters training and then the implementation of C K L A, going from a large pilot this year to implementation next. This is where we felt that a reallocation of an existing F T that we would be able to recover from the pre K scenario would provide a full-time K five literacy coach. The individual who will typically be someone from our current staff will work with teachers from pre K to five on the implementation and ensure that the fidelity of the implementation is one that we receive, that we achieve the desired outcomes and results from. So that's a literacy coach, you know, it, it's not much different than kind of the coaches that we bring in from Questar and and other places, but would be an in-house employee who would their full-time job would be to help us with, with our literacy initiative. This is a proposal from the middle school, eighth grade literacy in the content areas. This is kind of still being kind of sussed out, but basically, and I'm going to read this because this is something that I'm not as familiar with. And we don't have our principals here tonight, but to create two literacy in the content area classes for eighth grade students. One class would be combined with the E L A and social studies. Literacy focused, and the other would be math science literacy focus co-taught by the four core teachers on team eight, and if possible, and needed a special education teacher. The proposal will have no cost, will impact the entire cohort of eighth graders. And would be, if, at the worst case scenario, may need a six-period stipend, we're, we're just not sure based on not having the middle school schedule in place yet. So that's an eighth grade support for literacy in the content area. There's also a desire to increase our A I S support at the middle school. There's a, there's a sense that we're not able to meet the entire needs of our, our cohort, when you've seen I ready data, the cohort that's in yellow. We're struggling to maintain groups of less than five, so keeping our group size reasonable. And some students who need intensive support in math or reading should be seen daily. And right now we're only able to meet every other day with reading and math, so this would be to try to increase our A I S support, and I know Lisa's working with Brett on structuring this, and we're not quite sure what the budget impact would be, but we're going to use existing resources to to accommodate that. American history through film and music is, is yours, right, Mike? Okay, so I got somebody who's going to help me here. Mike, if you don't mind just doing maybe a sixty-second commercial spot on this, I love these three proposals from the high school are awesome, and I'm just so pleased that Mike can actually explain it to you better than I certainly would.
Thanks for having me.
Let's make sure, only because I wouldn't want anybody at home to miss this.
Yeah, I think it's all right, very good. My, my great, the teacher leader for social studies department here at Chad. So social studies department is introducing American history, American history through film, music, it's going to focus on modern American history. So we're basically going to go from nineteen forty-five roughly to the present. And we feel as social studies teachers, particularly U S history teachers, we're often rushed when we go through the twentieth century to talk about some important events from say, the Cold War era, civil rights, Vietnam, the seventies, the Reagan era, Clinton era, and of course, nine eleven. That, that's one in particular, we see not a lot of coverage on nine eleven. Most of our students or all of our students now in the high school are born after two thousand and one, so they don't necessarily have a working memory when it comes to those events and the impact of those events. And we're going to focus on the films and music, the contemporary films, music from those eras. So all the way from the development of rock and roll in the nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties, the counterculture to the nineteen seventies, and of course, the eighties with MTV and the development of hip hop and so on and so forth across the country. And we really want to see this as kind of filling in the gaps curriculum for our eleventh grade curriculum and also our twelfth grade government curriculum as well. And we think that it would be beneficial for students in eleventh, twelfth grade as an elective in order to really enrich that curriculum. Use film and I'll use as the examples to kind of tell the stories of Americans throughout American history.
And in terms of budget, we would use existing F T E to cover the class, and there might need to be some summer curriculum development, but we do have curriculum development money that Mike sets aside. And so the estimate of thirty hours would simply come out of pre, pre-existing budget money.
I thought we said we'd hold questions, but
Well, I know, I was, I was thinking, good, I guess, I was thinking the same thing, maybe if you don't mind, we deviate from that.
Do we have enrollment? You may not know this, I don't know, but do we have enrollment projections on student interest?
We, we don't at this time, I know that the guidance department is going through their scheduling for the following year, for the next year. Every student, every class that I've talked to, I usually go and introduce, you know, the social studies electives to tenth graders, eleventh graders, twelfth graders who are eligible for electives, and the interest has been very high for this. In my opinion, they say, oh, that's a cool course, I'd be very interested in taking that. And especially seniors this year, like, I wish I could take that.
If enrollment numbers were low, would this be something we could turn into distance learning to offset some of the numbers?
I, I'd be very open to that, it'd be a fantastic idea.
Okay, thanks, absolutely.
Good point, I don't want to deviate too much, but Dr. Rude is looking into kind of revitalizing, she's working with Narek. We have not participated in the distance learning program, I know Tocanik as a, or did at one point, had, had a pretty decent program. It's something she's investigating as to whether we could get back and either offer and or receive distance learning, you know, high school scheduling is always a challenge with that type of program, but we can hear back from her, and this might be a good candidate, so thank you. So I'm not so lucky to have other high school staff here, so I'll stumble through these. This is, I believe Elias had proposed this, this is music, technology and production. What caught my eye here is the fact that this would not necessarily be targeting traditional music students. It's really in terms of, of people who are already participating in lessons or an instrument, students would learn to analyze, compose, and understand many different aspects of electronic music. This course would be for any student interested in popular electronic music, composition, recording and production. This would also be complemented by the fact that the Chatham Education Foundation has just awarded them quite a bit of equipment, some new keyboards, some new recording equipment. So this would, that's why there's no additional staffing cost and really no additional hardware cost. We've put in here just a little caveat, they may need, you know, a software package or some materials, but nothing significant. And this class would fill a void that currently exists at the high school. It's designated to allow students access to music instruction who may not want or need to be part of an ensemble. And this would be a Right.
That's why it's face.
Right, exactly. Right, yes, we tried, I, I still try to bring any kind of curriculum proposals to the board, so you guys can
And they don't all stick.
No, you're right, they don't. And the last, this is coming from our teacher leader in, in art, Christina, and this is studio and media arts, this would be to create a full-year studio and media arts course, which will merge graphic design into a year or two studio course. And studio media arts will build upon the techniques, applications, theory and principles of art and design taught in Studio Art One. And again, this would be an elective available to high school students interested in pursuing an upper level art elective. And again, no budget impact, they would just use existing staff. If John were here, I think he would say to you, you know, these may not be offered every year. One of the things we try to do in terms of mitigating enrollment would be to make sure that everyone has access to it at one point when they are a student here. But some of these electives are alternate, alternated between years to, to build, you know, enough enrollment or interest in them, but I was very excited to hear from you. So those, I'm opening it up to questions, those are the proposals for this year.
Maybe could you start at the beginning of them and
Yep. I think this is the one that you had a question about. I think that's what Chris was, was in the one, or was it?
Yes, but I think I answered my question, so the student impact just means number of students it would impact, correct?
Yeah, that's what, it's an estimate, right? That we think right now that there's about fifty students that would, that would benefit from this, this additional speech pack. Any other questions or concerns?
I know software can be expensive, the music one, if we anticipate software, I'd like to see a number attached that, incidentals.
Yeah, I, again, you know, Mr. Chuddy is always very generous. We have a pretty, pretty nice, healthy software budget under technology, but that's, we can identify some titles and licenses.
Can we go slide by slide?
So any questions on the speech pathologist for pre K?
I did hear you say, I think the Columbia County is going, Columbia County is going to reimburse us for some of the pre K.
Right, so just to go into a little bit more detail there, so if we had a pre K program and there were students who were identified through the preschool community on preschool education, then it would be the responsibility of the county to provide speech services. Generally, somebody comes in from the outside, pulls students out on a predetermined schedule and provides those services. What we're suggesting, and it's, it's, it's a new concept for them, but you know, it, it's, it kind of serves, helps them too. We gain someone who would be our own employee and would be familiar to the district, providing services to our pre K students, and they would reimburse us for those services. And what they did is, they did an estimate, Brian, I think, I don't think you were, I think you worked on this, right? Brian did an estimate based on the number of students that are typically identified in a preschool cohort. And they, and they averaged out how many sessions per week and how many students to come up with some sort of number to help us, help guide us through this decision, Bob.
Thank you.
Next, the visitor management system, and it's six, eight thirty-five per building.
I, I think the questions I have maybe, I'm not sure if they could be answered, but you know, there's not a whole lot of information here, but that might be might be a reason for that, so.
No.
But, but the, the comment I have is, is two thousand, it just sounds like there's not a lot happening with two thousand a year. I mean, it's, it's whatever's being proposed.
Well, so the system is basically, the two thousand dollars buys you the computer, the printer and the scanner, and the initial licensing to the Raptor software. So basically, it's a database, right? And there's a couple, there's a couple different companies that make visitor management systems. Raptor has emerged as one of the industry leaders for schools, it's not the only one, but it's one of the top. So basically, when you come in, you're essentially, the software is built so that it scans your license and puts you into a database, and then on the back end through an internet connection is running your game and address through the publicly available sex offender registry. And so it does two things, then it, so it's checking for that, but then it's also producing a uniform visitor badge, right? So one of the things that we want to get better about in, and you remember through, and I want to be careful, some of the things that you've heard in executive session is if you think of our, our staff wearing our, wearing IDs, and then someone walking around the building should have be identified as a visitor. And being able to see that the badge prints, the takes the photo, it parses the photo from the license and puts it on the visitor badge. And then we, we'd have a protocol for, for the fact that person would have to, you know, enter and exit the building in the same place, so we can account for everyone. There's also an added advantage in terms of a lockdown or fire event, we can quickly ascertain who is in the building. And so if we have to reconcile, not only we reconcile student attendance, but we typically don't have a great we have a paper list of who might be in the building, so this, this kind of automates that process a little bit. It's, it's been around for quite a few years, we're kind of late to the, to the table on this. If I had to guess, you're, you're probably using it for four or five years.
Yeah, it, it's, it's pretty popular, it does a pretty good job by keeping people safe inside the buildings, it also tracks students, so if students come in late, they can scan their ID, and they'll give them a badge or a sticker so that, so you know whether or not they went to class, which is a, a nice so that, so you know whether or not they went to class, uh which is a nice, it also interacts with the.
Oh, and and I'm, Mike brings up a good point. This is all through the health and safety services at Questar. So the good news is these are upfront costs, but we'll get uh fifty percent, roughly fifty percent of this back in BOSI's aid the following year. So um yeah. Best deal in town. Uh K five literacy coach, any questions about um? I didn't read this part, but while you're thinking about your questions, the individual.
I don't have a question. I just think it's, sounds like an absolute no-brainer to me, so.
Well, you you know, when we put so much time and effort into our literacy program, we want to ensure that we um we're going to be successful with it. And I think this is an additional component that'll help our staff. I I don't know whether we'll need, you know, we'll certainly um budget for it for a few years. And then we can evaluate whether, you know, it's an ongoing um position, or perhaps maybe we need some uh support at some point in math and not literacy. So we'll, you know, but this would be, I would imagine, envisioned that we're looking at at least for the first few years until we build the capacity of our K, pre-K through five staff to be proficient with CKLA as a curriculum.
I I kind of thought it was very interesting today that I saw on a couple of websites that New York State has more literacy issues than the whole United States. So the issues we're seeing here in Chatham are statewide and maybe we need to kind of, I'm glad that we we're kind of stepping ahead. But it seems to me that there could be an issue there with the curriculum of the state.
So from the comptroller's office, and they talked about it being, it's like, uh it not exclusively, but one of the major impacts was that New York closed schools before many other states. And then we also were slower to reopen and had a serious Omicron variant um that close, that had rolling school closures, whereas other states of lesser populations or that had a later influx, they they stayed open for like literally just more days.
This is a subject we've been talking about all year.
Again, kind of an offshoot of the same idea where we're.
My my uh, I guess my question is um, or more of a thought, you know, I'm just going back to the the uh testing information that we reviewed, and my recollection is there were some pretty steep declines of of performance uh in and around grades five, six heavily in in its middle school. So I'm thinking about, you know, those kids, is this? Is this enough, I guess, is the question. We're doing a lot of things. I I, the only question I have about the K five literacy coach is, is there a year grant funding left for this?
No, actually, so we would be funding this through our current um FTE. So if you think about it, there's a cost, and Mike corrected from our cost shifting going on. We're taking uh what would be an existing pre-K teacher, um an existing kindergarten teacher. And we're we're, those teachers will now be shifted into the pre-K grant. So we are gaining back um the ability to have an FTE outside of the classroom that's in in essence already paid for.
And student population, so it had been analyzed against that.
Yes, yeah, and you know, we've been very cautious in not pulling out the FTEs too prematurely until we had either a need from a budget perter- budgetary perspective or a programmatic perspective. And we're real comfortable um that this is a very strategic juncture to do it. It it serves quite a few uh reasonable justifications in improving our access to pre-K services and improving our um ability to um enhance our literacy initiative. So we think this is really worthwhile.
Can you go back to the other, the proceeding consideration? Two teachers, sixty students, that's class size approximately thirty?
All we, all I did hear was they said that the eighth grade would be impacted and we between, there's roughly sixty students in eighth grade. So if where you're going with this, um it could be that one student is greatly impacted and another student is minimally impacted. So um I, that's just a rough, there's sixty eighth graders. I don't have any more uh, you know, uh data around.
Cause if if it's a literacy focused class, it would not.
Yeah, no, and I just, I meant really, this probably isn't impact as much as exposure. Is that a better word? So you know, this program will touch um the eighth grade and in the eighth grade, there are sixty students. I don't want that to be misleading.
When Lisa, when you see Lisa, can you ask her?
She's she's um on on tonight. She's listening in.
Okay, um is this uh, is are there curricular, curricular adjustments within the other non-content, non-literacy content area subjects to support uh literacy development in those? So if it, I guess I'm wondering, is this seems like a little more targeted um class to focus literacy in the content areas. But are we doing something in terms of curriculum to enhance literacy?
If you're okay with it, I will a- ask her to address that.
Sure.
We we have an academic update coming, maybe next meeting, maybe the meeting after. Could you just wrap that in?
Soon, yeah, I know, I know, I I know she was working on it.
Okay.
And again, I I don't want to, but this is kind of the same thing, right? Um I don't know, Chris, I I, part of me is thinking that this isn't going to be nearly enough. But we got to start someplace and 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 go from there. And I think we we're committed to uh, you know, continuous improvement and and more use of uh of data on a regular basis and to be able to kind of um judge the impact of of our interventions to a greater extent than what we've done in the past. Um but I, my 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 sense about this is this is just going to scratch the surface.
We struggled with the last AIS hire.
Yeah.
It it just, it just took us a while to fill, like happy years, like that.
Yeah, so this, this is why um we're taking a, oh wait, Brett has his hand up, so you know what? Maybe he can, he can throw me a lifeline. Uh, okay, I'd like to use, what, I can't remember what that is. Call the phone a friend and I'd like to phone Brett Fortran. This is great. Brett, I'm bringing you in as a participant. Um we are having some tech- technical difficulties. I'm hoping we can hear you. Um, if you unmute your microphone, we're going to give this a shot.
Can you guys see me?
Give us a second.
It looks like, oh, can you, can you talk a little more?
Can you hear me?
Hang on. Oh, wait, you know what? I think I have this. Brett, can you talk?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, everyone, everyone all good? So listen, if you remember, first of all, hello, everybody. Um if you remember when I did my building presentation, one of the things that jumped out at me in particular was the number of students um who needed AIS support, particularly if I remember correctly, there were sixty kids that according to iReady were at least one to two grade levels behind in math. Um and at that point, I said that I wanted to address that situation. This is my attempt uh to creatively address that and get some AIS support. If you look in the uh little blurb under increased AIS support, it says, some students need intensive support in math and or reading AIS in parentheses says should be daily, are only able to meet every other day. Basically, this kind of couples along with the present, um the AIS supports that that the elementary school presented. We have a new program um in in the elementary school, and I believe that Kristen is trying to continue on with the literacy and build those things. So hopefully I'll see those rewards in the middle school um as kids increase literacy rates K five. Right now, we have two AIS teachers in the entire um middle school. And unfortunately, there are a lot of kids uh who are one to two grades, if not more, behind with math and reading skills, and we just don't have the staff necessary to meet all of those kids. So we take the most needy kids and we try and get them up to pace, and then we send them back to regular, and then we pick up the next needy kids. That's a daunting process and we're just having um, we could use a little more support in trying to catch a larger swath of those kids, which I think we will see the returns on the CKLA program at MED, but that's going to take some time. Um so like Sal said, it's it's it may be a scratch at the surface, but I think that this little scratch at the surface here, along with the literacy coach at MED and along with a couple other things, implementing the new literacy program and a coach, collectively, I think that we can make um, you know, our trend look in a more positive direction. So I just wanted to kind of shed some light. I saw Sal, Sal out there and I was like, I can answer some of this.
We do also, yeah, we like.
Do you ask about these options? I'm curious, how like, is it, is Questar finding it easier to fill their staffing requirements than it is for us? And and in terms of, I I don't even know what a supervisory assignment is, so.
So I I'm having trouble with audio here, but for what I think I heard you say, Questar, I don't know how it's been, I don't know what their hiring practice is, but we have a brand new Questar specialist. Her name is Nicole Crisanda, who works with the high school and the middle school, and she has been phenomenal. Um I don't know the exact number of days that she's allotted to work in our district. Lisa would have that specific information. But if, you know, I put a bunch of options because I know that obviously there is going to be a financial impact. I would, in a perfect world, I would say we would hire staff, but like, I think it was Matt just said, we struggle to find AIS teachers um of late. So that was just one option. If we could get them more days, I believe we might get, I don't know, fifteen or twenty days. Lisa would know exactly um how many days we get for ELA support. If we could increase that, that would be, that would be helpful. Uh that teacher has done amazing work with all of our content areas, working on implement literacy across all of the different classes, and that's where the eighth grade uh class, one, the one prior to this one, that's where that came out of, that work with with Nicole Crisanda. And right now, we don't have math, um, we don't have math Questar support specialist days. So that's just kind of a little bit of the the context as to why that was one option. Option two is to examine the high school um teaching, middle school, high school teaching assignments um to see if there's more opportunity to pull teachers from supervisory periods to give more in-class instruction on literacy um and to support that overall initiative, which we've been working across the entire district. And the impact to all middle school levels, every, you know, the idea here is that these coaches for Quest are particularly, or adding additional teaching uh assignments, is that it would, we could impact and touch a lot more kids that we need uh some help with um with academics. And if you go back to the last slide where you guys were talking about the eighth grade, why I threw sixty students there, that was just because there are sixty kids, like Sal said, but every kid, if that class caught on and it went well, every class that would go through would get that. So really, it would touch every sixth, seventh and eighth grader. So it could impact upwards of, you know, a hundred and eighty to two hundred kids, depending on class size. But for this year or for next year, I just threw sixty as the number for the rough class size.
So Brett, is that, are you saying that that will eventually replace traditional, I don't know, siloed ELA and social studies, we're going to do a combined curriculum?
No, 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 no. It's it's just an extension. You'd still take math, science, English and social studies. And instead of uh a- another elective that they may get, um this would be a targeted um ELA social studies for twenty weeks and math, science for for twenty weeks. So it would take the place of, um right now, we have a reading class. So it would take the place of that reading class to be more targeted. And I like the idea particularly because it's cross-curricular, um and I think it it kind of sets the stage uh as a good step as going into the high school, because I know they do a lot of those projects across different subject areas.
So I have a question um just about, you know, targeting potential applicants um for this position. Sounds like we had trouble filling the last, the last one. Yeah, AIS.
So Chris, the AIS one, the way it's presented there, there is no, we didn't hire an additional staff. That would be to look at our current staffing, where some of them have uh teaching assignments and then a supervisory period would be to look and see if we have any um loose area there where we could pull them and and reduce their supervisory time. So there wouldn't be an additional hiring for staff there. And the Questar coaches, that's an outside contract. Lisa would know more specifically, or Sal probably knows. That would just have outside coaches would come in to help with math and literacy um more frequently to work with our teachers. So that wouldn't be hiring an additional staff, just to clarify.
And this is because it's difficult to hire additional staff. We're looking at all the other efficiency gains to.
Yes. So I don't think this is allowed in the game show, but I'm phoning another friend and Dr. Root is coming in. And if our technology seems to be working, um Lisa, do you want to make some comments as well? And I think Brett had a question that maybe you you could answer live instead of.
Sure, Brett was doing a really good job, so I was letting her run with it. Um so can you hear me okay? All, yeah, okay. Great. Um so right now, we have, uh I believe we have fifty days of coaching. And um and that is split across the uh elementary school and the middle school. Um there is a focus this year on middle school, high school to really that we, all of us own a part of literacy um and to this, so this idea of literacy across curriculum is important. Um I want to go back to Fred's comments. Um I I think that we've, we've dabbled in some um problem-based learning and some project-based learning. And um so that cross-curricular element is really ripe in the middle school. Um I think that this is a, like a foundational piece that could get us to some more cross-curricular work. But um we, we really have to get back to some of the the basics of literacy. Um and I I think that this uh, the the phased projects don't give you the entire picture of everything that's happening um towards literacy. These are, these are just some of the extra pieces. So I I don't want it to seem like nothing else is happening besides what's in in those phases. It's just these are above and beyond.
Okay, um Lisa, if you could stay connected.
Yeah, I'm I've been here the whole time.
Yeah, um I'm going to leave you as a presenter and was there, okay, so we're gonna, we're going systematically through any questions about uh Mr. Greig's presentation? We kind of asked him a few, anything on that one? Music and technology, I think we had comments about software and studio and media arts.
I'm curious why uh, why is this a summer program? Uh we don't have a lot of summer programming.
Uh no, what, we say summer programming. It was just the curri- the curriculum development part. Yeah, so getting up to speed, building the teachers' capacities to get the the curriculum in place is what would take place in the summer.
Okay, I missed that. Um no other questions? Can I just say it all sounds great? Just all of these ideas, I think, are great.
You you know, um what comes to mind is something that Matt and people that we've been alluding to, um there is not staffing challenges are going to continue uh well into the next several years. Um you know, we've talked about the state education department getting creative and attracting people to the profession and being flexible in in certifications, but that is not going to happen overnight. Um you know, when you're talking about approaching a senior who you're intrigued, trying to get enticed into the teaching profession, you are four or five years away from, you know, realizing that vision. So um it, this is, this is a challenge um that we're, that I think we're beginning to solve in terms of looking inward to our existing resources. Um certainly recognizing that people need to be compensated for um, you know, this this flexibility. We have mechanisms in place like six-period stipends stipends or reassigning supervisory periods, that kind of thing. So I think we need to leverage that and look towards um being uh, you know, creative in our approach, so.
Do we um, we're going to touch on the PD plan? I I think we're good on phase one.
Yep, okay, perfect. So.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you. John, are you here for P class or participation in government? Okay, yes. So I'm gonna stop sharing here, and I believe my portion of the longest superintendent's report to date is done. Uh one of the items was dra- third item was draft a calendar or calendar draft. Is done. Uh, one of the items was dra- third item was draft a calendar or calendar draft, which we did. So why don't we segue right into the professional development plan? Lisa, would it be helpful if I brought up a copy of that or just do you want to speak to it or just, um, I I know, do you want to make some general comments in terms of um?
Yeah, I can, I can just speak to it. It's a pretty long plan and it's um. You know, it's different than what it looked like before. And so this is, I just want to explain a little bit of what you're seeing. Um, as a district, we can offer, um, I'm sorry, let me take a step back from that. Uh, as a teacher, as a leader, there are several roles within our district where you're required to. Um, have a certain number of continuing or professional development hours. As a district, um. We're required to, in order for us to provide um those hours and um for our teachers and our leadership staff needed to. Um. To, in order for them to receive those, they're called CTLE hours. Um, we have to basically assure that we've met criteria. We have to register with the state. So. Um. Sometimes these plans are approved for five years at um a time. Um. Other times they're approved for a year. So I think this is why it didn't come up on on our radar. Uh, historically, this is what I can piece together. That historically, what's happened is um the professional development committee. Has put together a PD plan for their, the district. And this is something that is a step above that that says what are we as a district going to assure? That we're going to meet so that if we award professional development credit, that there's criteria that's met. So. Um, some of the things that we needed to. Now that we actually changes that we had already made, um, but now we're in compliance with is that the membership of the professional, the professional. Um. Learning, um, oh my goodness, look at my language, that the membership in the PD committee. Um, that it is, it's diverse, right? That it contains our teachers, that it contains representatives from. Um, our leadership team, that um, that we can expand it to include some community stakeholders. So. Um, that's, so we had to change the composition um of who directs this work. Um. So that's, that's one change. And um, we also had to pretty explicitly show. Um, and make some assurances that we meet criteria according to NICEs. So that's in in here as well. Um. And then one last piece with it is that. Uh, histor- in previous years, the professional development plan and the mentor plan. Um, were considered two separate documents, but NICED wants um these put together. So you'll see. Um, the mentor plan, which is at the end of this. Um, I I want to just put a little bit of a caveat in here to say that. The intention for this is for this year, that the PD plan, um, the PD committee is robust and active and. Um, we're really thinking about ending this year really well and starting next year strong. Um, so what we're asking for is, you know, for an approval for, well, this is the first read, but um, to. To go through an approval for just this year and then we'll go into next year um with some further refinements.
Any questions? So Lisa, we're not asking for approval tonight. That's on the next agenda. I.
That's my understanding is that we give it a, we give it a read, we give everybody a chance to um. Let it marinate and ask some questions and that we look for approval at the next board meeting.
Um, I had a chance to review this PD plan, but um. You guys might want to. Please peruse through. Um, any questions about it tonight?
Certainly before you approve it next meeting, we can address any um questions or concerns. Yes.
We, we do have a, I mean, it's.
Existing.
Old, but we have a, we have goals document and then we've been, and we're working on it.
Yeah. So, I mean, I. Yeah, it references the. The fact that we're still setting some. Right. It references the ones that are currently in place before they, we replace them.
I had a little bit of a hard time understanding if there, was there a question? Like, did you want to compare this to an old plan or, I'm sorry?
I, I, Fred was just surfacing the fact that we're working on goals right now.
Yeah, it's, it mentions there's goals in there and we haven't completed.
Yes, yes. So it would be great that if our plan for next year, that if we can um be all working towards a collective aim, I fully support that.
Right, um, I, Sal, if you don't have anything else, uh, we might be done with your superintendent report. I am, okay. Uh, into policy committee or into board committee reports, starting with policy committee. Uh, I didn't, I don't see um. A policy list today. So Pat, you want to give us a, did you meet since the last that we?
Uh, yes, uh, gee, it's been a while back. We met on February fifteenth was the last time we met. We were supposed to meet again today. Um, but obviously that didn't come to pass. Um. The last meeting, um, we did. It's more a discussion than anything else that we had. Um, let's see, the committee members on a separate, different topic. Um. And, you know, we're working right now three different areas kind of. Um. One of them had to do with uh. The uh. The board self-evaluation policy that we currently have. And then NISBA has suggested we have uh a policy on especially board goals. Uh, so um, so we're looking at that kind of, at the. Project on, uh, just taking, especially that now that we have the, as the board are also working on our, you know. Our, our goal planning. So we are taking that under kind of. A little bit of a small study, see what we're going to come up with in terms of an overall uh recommendation for policies. Um, also taking a look at the um. Number of the uh, uh, computer uh usage policies. Uh, we have a number of uh policies that are somewhat outdated, stale. NISBA has uh their own policies. So we're taking a look at what they have versus what we have. And trying to formulate what we need to eventually, you know, present uh to you all. Um, and the other area was we moved into the five thousand series of policies. Um, noted that there were a number of policies having to do with accounting. Um, and uh, are looking at what NISBA's recommending and what we have and. Doing the same thing, kind of coming up with what's our approach going to be. Uh, so, uh, and those are kind of three areas we were going to discuss today in our meeting, which obviously we're going to have to reschedule. So yes, we don't have anything new to work with you all. We did a few little cleanups. Um, there were a couple of small policies in the three thousand series that. We were going to, uh, we wanted to take a look at. The uh code of conduct, the new code of conduct, make sure those weren't already covered. We. Uh. Concluded they weren't, so we're going to leave those policies as is. Uh, pretty much that's where we're at at this point in time.
Uh, I'm gonna, again, and I don't know what you guys need left, but I'd like to have your committee, um, just try to come up with a solution. Because we're, it's, it's probably going to be some months before we finish this pass, um, at least a few, I would imagine. Um. And before we get there, that the board has at least a couple of months to review. Sort of like the work in progress set in a central location that's outside board docs and that has that.
Yeah, we have, we just, we actually discussed your concerns uh at the last meeting and. At this point in time, we really don't have a definitive answer. We're afraid of having multiple versions. Uh, you know, we're really trying to control our versions at this point in time. So um. What we have now is working for us, the committee, uh, so we can keep on top of everything. Um, to have another version out there, we're still working out that aspect of it.
So it doesn't need to be a copy of all the documents. It could be a document. Where we just summarize the status of each policy.
To be honest with you, that's, that spreadsheet is all about. That's what, that's our control document right now. So, and so in the comment section, it kind of gives you where the status of where we're at on any policy.
So, but we, but we don't have access to that spreadsheet.
Yeah, it was uploaded. It's been uploaded every, yeah.
Right, well, it's, it was, but it's not in this policy committee update and it.
Well, I didn't, we, we didn't do any update.
Okay, so there hasn't been any changes to that sheet?
Not since, no, not since that, um, February seventh, or the February seventeenth was the last time we met as a, as a board. So that upload had, I've had the, had the spreadsheet.
So I, I would say at this point, I still am uncomfortable with the entire process. And I, I feel like it may extend the policy adoption timeline by. By a couple more months than it needs to and, and I don't. I guess I'm trying to avoid that.
And, um, well, we, we.
I, I, I would like, just as a board member, not even as, as, you know, chair, would like to spend time going over every sentence of change. And providing feedback. And I feel like I don't have a way to do that. To start to begin that process so that, um. You know, it doesn't need to start when you're done.
Well, that's the reason why we've been uploading as we were comfortable with the policies that we have reviewed. In the one thousand, two thousand, three thousand series, the four thousand, we have been uploading them.
So I have a question globally, like overall process.
Right.
Is the overall process, is the, the idea behind the process? To upload as your, in, on your, so like your control document gets uploaded. Those comments are there. Board members can review those.
And it's, yeah, and.
And, and if there's comments, send those to you.
Yeah, exactly.
And then.
And we as a committee will look at them.
Right. And then at some point, there will be a draft that the committee decides wants to present before the board. And then that draft will then be discussed at the board.
Once we get comfortable with. That we're far enough along with any series.
Yep.
That we feel that there, there aren't going to be any more changes. Then we will then upload them for a first reading. That'd be the formal first reading, right? But at the same time, at this point in time, we want feedback from you all. As we're working through these, in case there is something that you see that we're missing or whatever.
No, I understand.
And at the same time. We're finding that, yes, we're working on maybe one thousand, two thousand series of policies, but there are policies further down the line that are maybe touch upon them.
Yeah.
So we can't totally conclude our reviews until we get further along.
But, but what I'm trying to ask is, is that, that process of. You uploading the control document that ideally you would like board members to.
Yeah.
Provide comment on.
That, that, that's exactly what.
Take that back to committee. Deliberate on it. And then at some point, you, you finalize a, a first reading draft.
What we recommend, correct.
And then that first reading draft is done like any other policy draft.
Correct.
We read it here, we discuss it.
And.
At board meeting level.
And if you weren't here five years ago or six years ago, when we did. The uh last total review, where we actually didn't even, we totally replaced all of it.
Yeah.
We, we didn't, we totally. Didn't even start with our current policies. We took. The service policies and use those as our baseline.
Yep.
And uh, so as we finished a section or two, we would upload the entire sections for review. As a first read.
Right.
So we're stepping back. We're trying to get this to you even before that.
But I'm just trying to get through the whole process. So, so the, so the idea here is, I'm just want to like lay it out so I understand. So you're uploading a control document where you would like board members to comment. You go, take that back to committee level, you make decisions on based on those comments, your comments.
Correct.
You, you create a draft first reading. That draft first reading is presented here at board level and we, as a board, at the meeting can also discuss it at that time.
Just like any other policy.
Just like any other policy. And then you go back if you need to.
Right.
Remise. So, so there's a.
But, but the probability is, it's not going to be individual policies. It's going to be a section at a time.
Right, but, but how do, that's, I, and I don't know if that's what Matt, Matt is touching on. So there's, so far you've touched on maybe two dozen policies. Does that sound about right? Roughly, I'm just like trying to say order of magnitude.
Very forty, fifty, fifty or sixty probably.
Fifty or sixty policies.
Yeah.
And so what I'm trying to say is, if I look at fifty or sixty policies and I have comments on thirty of them. Should I be surfacing? Should we be talking about thirty policies here in this meeting? Or should I be sending thirty emails? Because I literally don't know.
Yeah, I, we requested that you all, you just send.
But I.
An email with your.
I, I don't feel comfortable providing feedback in that way because I won't know. Well, what was the committee response to that feedback? Do we, are we really going to have thirty different email threads on thirty different policies somehow?
I'd say that even before, I think about what the committee is thinking. That's a heck of a lot of policy and email traffic.
Right, it doesn't seem um sustainable.
It doesn't seem sustainable.
Well, to be honest with you, we have not received one. Well, because I've been waiting for a, a way where I could submit feedback that it will work and I don't know what it is that.
I wasn't sure that what.
Yeah, I was, I'm kind of worked this one, so.
I, I'm not going to send thirty emails on thirty.
I don't think I can.
Yeah.
Why, why would you send thirty emails?
To make sure that they're all threaded, to make sure we understand that each one's handled and that we've, we've come to a conclusion on what's going to happen. On each one, that you understand the feedback, that.
Did you only send an email of something you just agreed with or there's something you agree with?
We're basically rewriting the whole policy manual.
Yeah.
So I might want to know the reasoning.
We're, we're up, we're revising the whole.
What our existing policies are, what NISBA said when they did their audit. And we're literally going to each policy saying, okay, NISBA said this policy is fine. NISBA said this policy we don't need. But then we talk about it, like, no, this is pretty Chatham specific. We are not going to take this one out. So we are, as we're going line by line by like what NISBA said about each one of our policies. Pat's doing a great job. She's putting in notes like, okay, they said we can take it away. We talked about it. And this is in our notes. We're going to retain this because this is a Chatham.
Notes where?
It's, it's in that, like an Excel spreadsheet.
But that's just like a sentence.
Well, it's really all that's needed because it's literally our existing policy. We're not rewriting anything.
Could you do a link to it, I wonder? So I, I, so like, I want to hear the comments, I, I guess. I want to, th- th- this is an arduous task. I don't envy any, any of you on this. Um, but. Like a sentence about a policy. Is that a context? Of the policy? And so like, it might be descriptive to have in there as I, but I also, I want to read the policy.
Well.
Even in the draft.
And they were entire pages struck out or entire paragraphs and I, I just don't.
Yes, the ones that have major changes, um, because they, this is what gives us sample policies of what would be better. So a lot of them are just like, fine, fine, fine. This one, we need to either blend it, change it. And those are the documents, and there's not too many of them, but there are some. That's what we're going to present to you guys, say, okay, this is what our original policy was. And then we'll provide you with a NISBA copy and then we're going to show you. How we blended it, but we're not there yet because we haven't gone through the cycle enough. Because we're finding a lot of policies at like section seven takes care of something in section one. And that's why we haven't gotten there yet. And that's why we haven't produced that yet.
So if we back out just globally here, there's two levels of, of work. Right? There's committee level work and there's fourth level work. Committee level work. Obviously has to be by nature more great. Than board level work, right? You understand that? So somehow we have to figure out how to. Do both. And. I think Mary would just said. Makes sense, but maybe we can, when we go to review first draft, maybe we're not reviewing them by section like. Here's the entire section that we want you to review tonight. First draft. Maybe that's too much to review in one, in one first draft. I don't know. Or maybe it depends on.
I, I don't think that that solves my concern.
Okay.
My concern is I literally don't know how to provide, like, I mean mechanically, I don't know how to provide the feedback.
Well, and the, and honestly, in the past. It's either, you know, we've discussed, if it's one one policy, we will discuss it at, you know, at the board meeting because it's one policy. And, and then take notes and bring, you know, go back for discussion to the committee. Uh, if it's multiple policies, then there has been some times written, you know, written feedback emails ever. Um. That's how the committee is operated.
This is literally two orders of magnitude. Or changes than that process that you're talking about. And I don't feel that. The board meeting or email threads is a solution.
So do you, let me ask this question because I, I, I think as censor Matt's coming from. Uh, uh, it may even. Uh, uh, it may even have a another layer to it that. Do you feel like you're, I mean, this sounds, it sounds like a ball of yarn, right?
I'm sorry.
It sounds like it could potentially be a ball of yarn, right? Like, do you feel like you're getting tied up in it? Does the process you're following have cohesion? Does it?
Our process.
Are you able to maintain it at all points?
I think the committee, we have a process down that's working for us, that we seem to know we're on the, we're always on the same page. Correct? That's how, you know.
Yeah, but it is, it's it's big. So I think that's why we're we're trying to keep a structure. So that we don't lose ourselves in.
I can see that happening very easily.
Right, because none of us have the time.
Right.
To to, you know, work on this, you know, hours on, days on.
I I just, I what I'm basically asking is I need a place, it's not in an email, it's just one document. That I can have a table of contents and I can say, this is what I feel about this policy change. And know that someone replies to that in that document in a central place. Either either written in a document or in a comment thread.
Or what about a separate column? If they're writing comments in a spreadsheet about what they've discussed, one or two sentences about.
We don't have access to the to that spreadsheet.
Put it on the regular board drive and then just have them.
And then we can comment right in the spreadsheet and then you can respond to comments.
The spreadsheet dated.
The the issue.
Have multiple versions of that spreadsheet.
I don't think.
That's a big issue because knowing what.
Yeah.
No, I I I don't think a spreadsheet will work because a spreadsheet itself.
Mm hmm.
And I wanna be able to write a sentence or a paragraph.
Wrapping itself.
Copy, I wanna be able to copy a snippet out of the out of the policy and say, this is the thing I'm talking about. And when you are in Google Docs and Sheet.
Yeah, no, that I can.
You only see half a sentence, then you have to click the more button to go down a comment thread. It's not gonna work. It has to be a document.
That's what I have a question.
And I don't know the answer, but maybe someone does. I bet there's software out there that can do this stuff, right? Maybe we just. Well, you just said.
He was saying sheets.
Oh.
I I was. No, but Excel would be.
But yeah.
It's one of the, it's one of the differences between Sheets and Excel is that Excel would allow for that wrapping to occur without cutting off the sentence. You expand the whole.
It will be.
The column, yeah, the 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 row becomes.
Well, not only that, but various people are gonna do different things. It's like, it's not gonna be consistent, right? So maybe if no one know, we don't, we all are not familiar with this software, maybe we should. Either become familiar with that software.
Can't.
As a.
Can't you embed a, I'm sorry to cut you off, Chris, but um can't you embed a a doc into the cell? So the separate document is being run with comments and the link to that is in the cell.
But I suggest. I sound like a lot of.
It it sounds like a lot less than the emails.
Well, one document could be a lot.
Yeah, right. But even one doc, even one comment document per policy that's getting revised would be easier than seven people sending four emails. We 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 could do, Lisa or several others could do a uh could do a hour. I don't think you'd need more than that on on that specific tool, uh hour and a half. Lisa, you're still connected. Do you want, have any thoughts in terms of doing a little? Google training for the, I think you've even may have suggested this at some point.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to. I think it's just coming to, can, am I, I'm not muted, okay. Um. It's just coming to consensus on on process. It's, I think there's a lot of things that everyone can. From policy can keep doing in a in a similar way. Um, but then once that work is done, that we can put it up in a way that that everyone else can comment. So yes, oh, you get to see Goose. My dog, find me too.
But I don't, I I don't, I don't need to like be working in their library of documents that are an active work in progress. That's not what I'm asking for. I'm asking for a document that we can all share. And participating conversation about the content of the things that have been put in for for docs. Just ask me for one document.
Yeah, we can do that.
It's like series one and just print out a big version of already first series this week. And then they have, you know, check it out.
Even though it may not be, it may be, we may not be at a point where we're final.
No, it it's not the policies, like you guys have presented that in a in a in a method that I think is, it works. You presented them into. For docs, we're able to read them. What I'm not able to do is provide you feedback and that's why I want a document. And I can type the feedback into that you can then read. That we could share so that it can be updated. We can all write comments in the same document.
It's going to die, but I don't think you can do that effectively for all of the policies.
Well, there'd be a table of contents and there'd have to be numbers. Yes, that's why we need training. To know how to do that.
Once it was finished, back to the board, to read and make comments on it. These aren't really final things. They are taking two sets of documents, NISBA and ours. And try to figure out how to gel them together and how if there's something here and something down there. That are similar to gel both, I think we need to be good at this.
So you bring up another point, and I think that that's actually where the conversation started was that. You had said, Matt had indicated that like it's going to be several months.
Happy with that process, actually. I feel that they're doing a great job there.
Yeah.
But I feel that we are not able to participate right now at all.
No.
Until they're done. And that seems like a waste of what could be like six months of time where we can have new policies in place.
But the complex, so so that's it. You have the complexity of the of the of the issue, which is going to take six months. Or you have the complexity of the feedback during the time of the issue. That can also take six months. That's not gonna necessarily expedite that process at all. So if we step back and let them just take care of it, trusting the the process, the the committee, then what we plan on doing is looking at them in July.
That is my original question or point is that process review at board level is going to be tedious.
It may be, that's my concern is the magnitude of how much revision the board will have to do at one time could be.
The reason why we were trying to get these to you as we were working on them so you could see them now. Rather than wait until we were totally done with.
So considering Beth's comment about the 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 nature of the urgency. Or the imposed nature of the urgency, whichever whichever it is, um perceived or imposed or real. Maybe maybe it is like a, we 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 leave you to do the business for the next three, four, or five months. And then that when you feel like you're at the place where we're finished, right? Maybe, let's say it's July. July is the one, is the first series. August is the second series. And we then give ourselves time to process. The policies out and approve them series by series over, you know, a series of. I don't think it'll be a year. Some of them may be, some of them may be really truncated. We don't know. Some of them could be really truncated, it could take a minute.
I think once we get to six thousand, we'll be, we'll have a better feel for whether we're gonna have to go back and change any.
You're at four now.
We're at five.
You're at five.
What what I what I feel like I'm hearing from the policy committee is they're not interested in feedback until they're done.
I think that's smart.
Well.
If that's the answer, that's actually an okay.
That's not what I'm hearing from them, but that's what I think Beth proposed today. I think that's, I think that might work.
To get feedback real quick because while the issues are still fresh in our minds and all that, it's much easier for us to address them. Rather than six months down the road.
But I think the issue that Matt's identifying is that process for getting that feedback to you at this stage. Seems to be complicated.
And that's what, you know, we're having, you know, how do we, how do we?
So we either invest in the training and time to figure it out so we all work together, or we do what Fred's saying. And we. So how important is, how important is that feedback to you? Because it sounds like at this moment, we don't have a way to provide the feedback. And so if we need to either. Invest in a document management system, which would be a lot of expense and training, or simply learn how to use the existing collaboration tools we have. That allows comment threading and and multiple use of the same document once. If that seems like something, if you if you want the feedback, I think we need to either acquire a thing and train on it. Or just train on the tools we have, and that needs to happen inside the policy committee.
Or you wait and give us, and we give you months to get that feedback and.
Yeah, and that's that's actually an okay option with the understanding that it might add a whole lot of time.
It could.
To be honest with you, I know, for, you know, I I don't have the time to develop what your answer was.
Yeah.
Uh, I really don't.
I think the best point thing to do at that point in time is to just, let's be patient. And if if we have to go back to the drawing board. It it push the complication to the back end. We may find it's not, it's not as prevalent as we think it is looking at it at the front end.
Well, no, 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 we're we're still working cleaning up.
Five.
You know, we're into five. We're just, we're just starting working near the five thousand here. We have six, seven, and eight. So and seven and seven is the, in terms of of the number of policies, I think it might not be a bunch of a challenge. Uh, because somebody are required, uh and we've been keeping up on them most of those. Uh, but the five is, you know, and they definitely don't. But by the time we get through those, we'll have a better feel for whether we think we're gonna have to go down and change that.
I I I I'm I'm comfortable with that. We can just um. Slow down the expectations on real time feedback and and and.
My life is.
But but we also have an understanding of the time this is gonna take because you're about at the halfway point, is that right? Or almost at the halfway point? Little.
I really did, yeah. I I would hope we're at the halfway point a little more back.
So we will probably be.
Starting five though.
Will probably be be beginning that feedback cycle mid to late summer. Um, and at that time, we'll have to come up with a new system and that's fine.
Yeah, I I I, otherwise, we're gonna make it harder to start.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes you just gotta dig.
And your whole policy committee has to run through the school board.
Well, I was hoping they're still here. You're still here. Um.
Let's let's talk about.
That might deter news.
All right, well, I I didn't mean to put you on the spot like that, but I felt like I I I didn't know how to help you. Um, but it, but we can wait a few months.
No, honestly, I I'm so used to very short. Feedback when I get, you know. I'm, my whole career is working with spreadsheets and this, you know, in terms of documentation. And feedback is and rather it's very, like, you know, I'm used to getting it's very pretty succinct. So I I didn't envision a lot of, you know, uh, problems with it, honestly.
All right, unless you got something else on policy, we could.
Do you think, do you need more? Man, at the, at this point, maybe the only thing we could feasibly offer is more membership to policy. More support in that fashion.
We could solicit another community member if it's useful, but I don't.
You know, I I think we're we're moving along if that we we can, given the time we do have. Because having more more. Uh, more members, it doesn't mean, it's 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 a, it's a phase time that we have to discuss. To get, come to a consensus. And we come to a consensus pretty quickly, but there's just a lot of stuff. Because you, you know, every policy has a lot of, you know, a few months, to be honest. So.
Complex language. All right, are we are we ready for facilities?
And I, and I think we we have it down to a pretty, you know, fairly simple documentation problem. But it does take.
And you have a system that you're following, you know what you're doing, like to see finish it.
Um, all right, we're, let's move on into facilities, Chris. I'm just gonna echo uh Sal's comments on. Uh, capital project passing, obviously, uh, we're all very. Energized um to to move forward with the project. There is a process that is now starting uh to engage uh the architects. Uh, interview uh construction manager. Uh, so that process is starting. There will be interviews, I believe, in early April. Mid mid April.
We we don't have.
It might be a mistake.
We we had set one, but then we're moving it back.
Okay.
Uh. Uh, because we're trying to, we're trying to have the CM tie into that. So um, so hopefully, you know, the idea is that we're gonna have a construction manager on board. Um, by end of April, mid April, somewhere in that timeframe, right? And um. And then, you know, the the difficult task of figuring out uh the phasing of the work. Because there's a lot of work to be done and not everything can be done. Right away. So there's a process for preparing the documents. Uh, getting design plans ready, uh, understanding what that phasing is in terms of um. What can be done over the summer? Is there work that can be done during school year that people, what are we looking at in terms of the projection of population? Uh, so those are the big questions uh at the moment, and we should hopefully have. Some more information regarding that within the next couple of months. In terms of other components of facility committee work. We haven't started discussing that, but obviously there's other things this district needs to consider. Uh, besides what we just passed on a couple of projects, so the project process will start as well. And uh, Mary and I. Mary and I have expressed interest in pointing.
Well, there's.
Only, the only issue with membership of the committee is we have to make sure we don't um. It well, it has to be, um, it can't be mostly board members. So it has to be, we have to make sure we have enough other people to balance it out.
That was the question.
It's fifty. It can't be most. So the definition of most would just be.
I don't, I don't mind waiting until next year because the policy, this is big. This is really big. So thank you, though. But but I'll I'll wait on that until I get past this.
It's a very subtle announcement of candidacy.
So we we could have three, if we had three community slash district people there at every meeting. As members. So I think it's two right now, right? Three.
Mike, uh Andy and I.
Are you, Sal, I don't know that you're named as a member of that one, are you? But we could.
I don't know.
But we could count you.
And architects don't count us.
We could, we could include anyone we want as a committee member, um, if we wanna, we want them to be, you know, but then they're making um. Uh, there there are some, you know, there's some formality to appointing someone to it, basically a decision body. All right, so as long as we, but I, you know. I don't care who's on the committee yet, as long as they care about facilities. Yeah, and I I don't know that we named it Andy was big. I have to go back, but I think we only had two history members. Last year. Could we look at that again this year? Um.
We're only at facilities. It's nine o'clock.
Are you guys ready to talk about finance committee real quick? Because I I think that one's gonna be short, right?
Yeah.
All right.
I have nothing to add.
You guys ready to move into new business? All right, so we have some motions here. Um, R thirty four, be resolved that the Board of Education accept the results of the twenty twenty three capital. Project referendum vote held on February fourteenth. Um, whole um propositions passed, proposition one, four nineteen, yes, to one eighty one, no. And proposition two, four oh three, yes, to one ninety three, no. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Questions or comments on R thirty four? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, R thirty five. Um. The these are um. Financial resolutions. Uh, it's the bond resolution. Is it just a bond resolution here? But also the spending authorization, right?
Yep.
Associated for um the capital project um passed in the in R thirty four. Uh, uh, proposition. Um. Vote results. R thirty four, be resolved with the Board of Education. Vote results. R thirty-four be resolved with the Board of Education uh that the bond resolution dated March fourteenth for that res, for that uh proposition um be authorized. That's a mouthful. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's like ten pages, so I didn't know how to request that one down.
Didn't I? Perfect.
R thirty-six be resolved, Board of Education accept the agreement with SEI Design Group for Design um and Construction Phase Services associated with twenty twenty-three Capital Improvement Project. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Um, questions or comments on R thirty-six? I actually have a question on this one. Um, the contract is in um executive content. Um, I guess I just want to someone to eyeball section two of that document for me real quick and help me understand if the math is correct there because I can't, I don't understand it. It seems appropriate to. I can just move it. Okay, so it's it's just, you know, I'm looking at the total, the whole, most fixed, and I don't understand how that uh, how they arrived at that number. It's it's a percentage. But if these numbers don't add up, that's why I don't understand it. I tried doing the math and I could, I could think of words, but but I didn't.
Yeah, it's like a hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, I just, I I might be reading.
Yeah. But that's.
If it if it needs investigation, that's fine. Um. Is there, I know this is already signed, but is there an urgency to passing this one tonight? We have a good relationship with them, so I'm not. Or just an explanation.
We we could approve the scope of work. We could approve the percentage that they're proposing on the total cost and and authorize the correction.
If it's required.
If it's required.
Well, I guess this question might be like, is the intention that it's supposed to be seven point six? Because that's like a normal issue amount. That's fine. Is that even a useful authorization for you? Or is it not specific enough? Ignore, we'd have to come back and authorize the contract anyway. Thank. It was, I I'm just saying in terms of the work. We have a good relationship, don't we? They're not going to down tools, so. I. Well, we we already extended the motions. Now we have to vote on it. But that's okay with the with the comment that um. Oh, there's still, I can still. We should just come back to this another night.
Yeah.
So we've, we've already accepted a motion for this. So I with with the understanding that we're simply at at the board um awaiting clarification, my current vote would be no on this one, but um uh, we're just going to vote on it. Um, I'm going to vote no.
No.
Um, it's so all in favor? Should you think we can go back? Okay, can I have a motion to to uh remove R thirty-six from tonight's?
Motion.
Questions or comments on that process? Okay.
No, please calculate this for next meeting.
Or or. Okay, thanks. Um. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, Mary Ann, do you have questions about the waiting list?
I already discussed it.
R thirty-seven be a result, Board of Education designate the uh withdrawn library materials as presented to be eligible for disposal. We do this, I think, a couple of times a year. Um. Can I have a motion? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we're into consensus agenda. I through K, R thirty-eight be a result with the Board of Education, except, except consensus agenda, I through K as written. All in favor? Oh, sorry. Okay. Uh. Does anyone have any concerns? Or questions? Okay. That's, that's fine. Thank, thanks, Pat. Um, all, all in favor?
Policy.
All in favor of I through K? Any opposed? And uh with that, we are into items for future agenda. We've got that one. Um. Uh. We're going to look into the math on that on uh that contract. Um, we were asking for an update for uh, I guess we want to wrap. We had a couple of notes for the academic update, um but I know Lisa was listening. Um, did, did anyone else catch something that they want to add to future agenda? Okay. We are in second public comment. Do we still have members of the public online? This is an opportunity to decide any issues affecting shadow of the polls.
Actually, she was on earlier, which surprised me. She was probably in the car, but John just texted me not too long ago and said, everybody arrives safely in Rochester. So we're thankful for that. And right now we only have a couple of staff persons left. We have no public, but they certainly.
Okay. Um. Well, with that, we are um at the conclusion of our open session. Um. Do you expect the need to be an executive session um to speak about issues um uh impacting a particular person or corporation? Um, and uh we also may need to discuss um a current um uh proposed pending or current litigation process matter. Uh, with that, be it result, the Board of Education enter executive session. Can I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we do not anticipate uh returning to open session. Yeah. Um. Item two, um. Can I have a motion to appoint uh Salvador D'Angelo at District Pro Ten for the executive session? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, okay. And so we are.